It is 7 o'clock. I'd like to open the meeting. And first thing we always do is read the agenda. At 7:00, we have a community input, and I'm going to remind everybody about the rules again. One-minute limit. You have to identify yourself with your address if you haven't identified yourself beforehand, before the meeting. Appointments and resignations, 7:15, we will have Transfer Station Action Committee at 7:45, budget discussion, 9:15, unspent bond proceeds reapropriation vote, 9:20, a TA report, 9:35 minutes and warrants, 9:40 liaison reports, 9:45 cemetery deeds, and at 9:50, another session of community input. So is there anybody in the room that wants to offer community input? Nope. Anybody online? Hmm, I don't think I see any. I don't know who that person is on the left.
Hi, Kate. This is John Lavery.
Hi, John.
Hi, I have comments, but I, sorry, my camera's messed up.
Well, we all got your email, and we got your latest one as well, and that has been circulated to the board. And it will be put, didn't come in time for the, to be put included in the packet, but it will be included in the minutes.
Okay, I think the way you told me this works is that during the public comment section of the budget, you would ask people that if they wanted to speak.
I will, absolutely, yes. I will do that as well.
Okay, I'm out of here then. I mean, I'll shut up.
Come back later.
Okay. See you later. Can we get the volume of that? Oh, okay. Thank you. I don't know, we don't have anybody talking now, so.
I can talk if you want to for a second. Is that okay?
No, well, it's, I think the problem, John, is on our end.
Okay, you want me to do like a one, two, three test?
The, the people on Zoom are faint when they speak in the Zoom.
Hi, David.
Hello.
Okay, we're going to move along to appointments.
Just don't like you, John.
Would you like me to make a motion?
That is not a public statement.
Yes. Strike that from the minutes.
Okay, yes.
I value his input.
We are at our 7:05 appointments and resignations portion of our agenda, and Barney has offered to make the motions.
I would make a motion to move to appoint Billy Joe Kelly. I guess we're not doing street address at the moment, as a member of the Youth Commission termed to end June 30th, 2026.
How, okay, so normally, we did do that, and that would be in the, normally, we have that as.
It is, it's Graystone Lane.
Sorry, just streets?
148 Graystone Lane.
Okay, Graystone, and it's.
So Billy Joe Kelly, 148 Graystone Lane, as a member of the Youth Commission, a term to end June 30th, 2026. Do you want me to make the second one as well?
Sure.
And move to appoint Brooke McIntosh of.
303 Russell Street.
Thank you. 303 Rutland Street.
Russell.
Russell, sorry. Russell Street as a member of the Youth Commission with a term to end June 30th, 2026.
Okay. I believe, is there, there was a thing from Peggy that she actually checked, checks that, and so maybe we don't need to have those anymore in our motions.
Oh, the address?
I'm just, we should probably straighten out that kink, but.
Well, that's fine.
Okay. I, there was a motion to second. Any comments? Questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, that was unanimous. Thank you. 7:15, boy, we're moving trucking here. Transfer Station Action Committee, well, come on down.
Ryan, could you bring up the slides?
Yes.
We are a few minutes early.
We're a few minutes early, and I.
I thought other people were joining us.
I actually know of one person who said, told me at least he was going to come at 7:15.
Okay. Let us do some cemetery deeds then.
Sorry.
No problem.
It's all right, you, you don't have to move. Is there a motion to transfer land in the public burial ground of the Green Cemetery described as deed, 817 lot D415 graves 1, 2, and 3 to Karen James Rumore, who was a former resident?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to pass these down for signature. Does anybody need a pen? Or shall I pass a pen with it?
Good. I got the pens.
I have a pen.
Yeah.
Usually, it's Nathan that needs one. So you might have to pass your pen down.
That's fine.
Okay. Minutes, maybe we could do one of them, at least one of the minutes, or do the minutes?
Sure.
Do the.
There's the February 26th and March 12th. Do you want to do them separately?
Yes, because February 26th, there was redo.
Yeah. Oh, no, that was the Land Use Summit. And then, and there's a third set of minutes, too, which isn't on the motion, but, yeah. So I can move that the Select Board approve the meeting minutes as presented or amended for February 26th, 2024, which was the Land Use Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Were there any amendments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous?
And I could, I'll move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for March 12th, 2024.
Is that the second set or the first set?
That's the second one in the packet, and then we had a third set that came out this afternoon. Yeah, separately, or yesterday morning? I can't remember when they.
The ones that you had fixed.
You had a.
Yes, okay. So.
So this is for the March 12th.
March 12th.
I guess that would have been our last meeting, yeah, our last meeting.
So Barney, you just made the motion.
I just made the motion, yep.
David, did you second that?
I did, I can, I'll second.
Okay.
And then these are for signing.
So I do have a comment on that one.
You did, okay.
March 12th, yeah, okay. It's, I think it's fine. Gretchen does a great job. It's just, it's a little, when the Mike Hanauer thing, it's like all this string of stuff, and I'll meet you for lunch, it's like a lot of stuff in there.
Wait, you're doing it for lunch? Is that what you said?
No, I mean, what's in the minutes is like a whole string of email stuff.
Right, emails sent.
If you have lunch, and I think we could make it smaller, like just to the thing he wants to say, because.
Well, I know, but we have been including written comments in the minutes. Maybe it should be not included like that, it should be appended at the end.
Yeah, I mean, it's a whole string of stuff. It's like you took the whole email and the whole thing, but really, the thing he wants to say is up at the front.
I see, rather than copying the entire.
No, we'll have lunch together, yeah, we'll do that, it's like those back and forth.
Instead of doing the whole email.
Right. So what we can ask Gretchen to do is to just say, see, you know, attachment, that the.
Well, do you feel like we, in that case, not this one particularly, but, that if somebody sent, because the thing about email is you got like all this history.
Yeah.
Do we feel the need in complete reporting to always put the entire thing, even when we know what they really mean is the most recent interchange? Because people sloppily don't cut off.
Right, they forward.
We all do it, I do it too.
The whole thing, or reply all.
You're just too lazy, you just reply all, and then it's got everything, you know. As a practice, could we take that editorial privilege, or do you feel we need to, if they have it in the whole string, we got to put the whole string?
I think it would really boil down to what is the content of that whole string, right? I mean, if it's just so, we might have coffee.
Yeah.
And then who makes the determination?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have a position, I'm just pointing out that it, you lose the thread of what he's trying to say, because there's so much stuff in there.
Yeah. I totally get what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's just hard to figure out. Where, where do we draw the line? I have another point relative to that, or related to that. On the ZBA, we used to always take comment prior to the meetings, and if there's written comment, it went into our packages or whatever. And I actually think that's a really good practice, because then, you know, if a person can't speak or whatever, and you could have a cutoff time, you could say, within 48 hours or whatever, up to that point, we publish, or we put those in our packages so that we all see them, and the public sees them too, rather than just putting them in the minutes afterwards.
But we do do that, don't we? Isn't that what we do, like?
Well, we haven't, but I'm thinking of, you know, and specifically, there's one that came out this week with John Lavery, and, you know, putting stuff like that in, I think is helpful, because it ensures that everyone sees it.
John wrote a specific.
To an issue.
To an issue or a set of issues, actually, and then Ryan said, he may not show up, he's actually here, but despite our attempts to mute him.
That's a joke, John.
It's a joke, John. And I lost the train. So I thought, in your note, you said, I'm going to put it in its entirety into the packet, right?
Into the minutes.
Into the minutes, so it would show up as, okay, in the, is it in the packet? Can the public see it, or only when the minutes come out?
Only when the minutes come out.
So it's kind of after the fact. I just like it, because I want to make sure that everyone on the Select Board and everyone in the public who's interested in our packet sees what the public is saying.
So when would you like to see them? When the minutes come out, or?
When the packet comes out.
It would be like Friday.
But anything Friday, I mean, you have a cutoff.
Well, I agree.
Anything that should go in the packet, and maybe it's its own section, just like public comment or whatever. Well, also, though, anything that we discuss or is presented here tonight or in any meeting, whether it was in the packet or not, needs to be attached to the minutes.
Exactly.
So in this case, I mean, I don't really care, it's just stylistically, it actually works to their detriment, or Mike's detriment, because there's extra noise in there that's not really relevant. So I don't care, but maybe Kate's compromise is the best, that these things should be appended.
But it also sounds like we're in agreement that if we could have them in time to go out in the packet, that they, that would be a good thing as well. They go out in the packet.
Public comments.
Yeah, anybody that sent any information in.
But he actually didn't, right?
If we're going to discuss it, then I think it should go in the packet.
Right, but if somebody sends.
This is the case where, we've just discussed it, so.
Well, now it's in.
So now, now we have to, but. I think if somebody just emails us something before, it doesn't necessarily have to go in the packet.
No, sorry, I meant relevant to the agenda.
Right, it's something that. Related to the agenda. Yeah, something that we're going, if we're going to discuss what is sent, then it should go in the packet.
Okay, so I'm hearing.
So there's, there's different type of correspondence you receive. So there's a lot of people who want to get on the agenda, there's a lot of people who have something to tell you, and there's some people that want to do public input. The public input, like, I want this to be part of the record, is rare, and usually comes to you during the meeting.
Right.
So we're trying to balance sending it to you, it just, there's nothing wrong with putting it in the package, it's just I'm not sure that was the intent of the people who sent it necessarily. A lot of the times, they're just trying to get on the agenda for something, and we send that to you and say, hey, is this something?
So there's, I mean, there's kind of three different things, right? Somebody in public comment raises their hand and says, I want to speak, and they speak. That's, that's in the transcript, and does Gretchen transcribe those in the written?
Yeah, but I'm trying to limit how long people can speak. People used to come and read lengthy.
Right, yeah, no, you're right.
Things, and I said, well, you can write your lengthy thing, so give me a bullet point.
So that's case two. Case two is, like Mike gave us a statement or whatever.
Right.
He didn't read it into the record, so if you're listening to the recording of this meeting or participate, you don't know what he did.
Right.
That gets entered or appended into the minutes, and we're saying, maybe it shouldn't be in the body of the minutes, maybe it should be in the end.
I think it should be in the end.
So that's good. Then the third thing is, not to take his name in vain, but the John Lavery case, where he says, ahead of time.
Yes.
I might not be there, here's what I want to be said. I guess you treat that sort of like the second one, right?
Yes.
It goes into an appendix and so and so said. There's a final case, which is rare, I think, where somebody does send something ahead of time, and you, the chair, decide that that actually is something we want to take up in the meeting. It's usually, we wouldn't do that, we would take it up in a subsequent meeting, where then it would need to be part of the packet. Is that a fair summary?
Or I would send it as part of the packet for discussion as to whether we want to put that on a future agenda. I think that would be more the case.
Right, okay. So I think in the case of this, so we can leave this one go, it doesn't matter, but in the future, that sounds like a good practice then.
Did you grab that or not?
Not to interrupt, but Aubrey's joined us, she's back.
Yay!
Where's that baby?
Picture Aubrey up yours.
Welcome back, Aubrey.
We want the whole thing.
Took a little bit of time to get him.
Hold on. Oh, I can't put him on camera right now. He's decided he doesn't like to join the meeting right now.
Okay.
You can't start too young, Aubrey. Start him young, get him used to these night meetings.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Kate, for taking the time to talk about that.
All right.
I'm done with my comments.
You're done with your comments? All those in favor of approving those minutes?
I am fine with it.
Yeah, I am.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and we'll take the minutes of.
Oh, he's abstaining.
I abstain, I was abstaining.
Oh, you abstain, okay. We'll take your last, that last set.
Later.
Later. So minutes minus one, okay.
Person who said.
And welcome, Transfer Station.
Could we push back up, Ryan?
Yeah.
And we're there. Just two, did I get? And go to the second slide. So we're here today to talk about three things. We started a dialogue a couple, about a month ago, actually, on the Black Earth subsidy, and so we'd like to conclude that and see if we can determine a subsidy for FY24. And then, more importantly, tonight, is to talk about Transfer Station recommendation for immediate enforcement, strict enforcement, very soon, and then more broadly, talk about change to the Transfer Station regulations and procedures, hopefully to take effect by July 1. So if you go to the next slide, Ryan, on Black Earth, I've tried to simplify this, basically focusing on FY24. We have enough money in TSAC budget and donation of ESC to do 60 supplement clients, and we'd like to do 125. We only got three months left in this fiscal year, so setting that at 125 is being a practical limit of what we can really accomplish, which requires a subsidy of $2,196 in this fiscal year, and that's what we're asking for. Go ahead.
How many have done it so far?
We really haven't started. The big first campaign is the ESC event on April 27th. There were 20 folks who'd signed up previously, who they were going to carry forward if they still live in town, some, and many do, and so that, you know, we may have 20 there, but you know, they signed up a couple years ago, so they maybe not want to continue to sign up. But our big event is the Sustainability Day. We're going to have two tables, one on the Town Common as part of the event, but also have a table at Transfer Station, because a lot more folks go there. So we're going to try and really hone in on that, on that day, and that's when we're really going to handle on how easy your heart is going to be. So if we get 125 folks this fiscal year, that should save us $4,000 in FY25, and more than pay for any subsidy next year. And likewise, if we got like half the folks next year in the first half, we should save money in the second half. So really, next year, there shouldn't be an incremental expense, it's just a question of cash flow, if you will. But this year, we've got to start up, and that's practically, we're not going to get 125 clients in three months, we wouldn't think. And if we do, then we can, we'll deal with that. That would be a good problem to have. So that's really what we're asking. Last time we got cut off, there were some questions outstanding, so really, it's a question, if you folks have any questions, you'd like to ask us about it.
So just be certain, it's $36 one time?
It's a one-time fee, that's right.
So there is money, you have the money for 24 already, right?
No, we have money for 64 residents, between us and ESC.
Oh, so you're asking for extra money in 24.
$2,196, and it may not be needed, that's.
That's this year. I know, so where does that come from?
It would come from your expense line.
What's my expense line?
Select Board's expense line.
Hey, we didn't know that.
Okay.
And then 25, you say we could delay till June, but isn't it the now time to budget for it?
The issue for 25, in my mind, is the, really, it's not going to increase, it's not going to result in a budgetary expense, it's an accounting issue. We don't have a line which we can take money out and put it in.
So a revolver, basically.
So what Ryan wanted to originally was, he wanted to have a one-and-a-half-year experiment, so he wanted to kind of finance the first year and a half and see what happens, and then act on the DPW budget. You know, I don't think we need to have that, I really don't, but.
So, so the FY25 request, which is $6,300.
That's what we would need, if, but see, if we don't get 125 this.
That's what you would need if what?
We want to get another 100, so if we got 125 this year, and we want to target.
Fiscal 24.
Correct, and by, by July 1.
Yeah.
And we want to get 175 target next year, that's what we need to cover that.
In addition to the 125.
That's right, that's right, that's what we need to cover that.
If, if we were to continue to offer the subsidy.
Correct.
We could choose not to offer the subsidy.
Exactly.
The subsidy is for just FY24.
In the worst case, we don't offer the subsidy next year.
And it's a, it's an encouragement to go ahead and get signed up if you want to get the subsidy, starting FY25, because what does Black Earth need? What are they saying they need to go ahead?
50, 50.
50.
By zero, yeah.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of a chicken or egg thing?
Yes.
Because we need to budget now for FY25, so we don't have the opportunity to know how well it's going to work.
Except not really, because if we get those 125 customers now, we're going to save $4,000 approximately in the FY25 budget, because those folks will all be on stream July 1, and $30 a client roughly in savings per year. If we get, if we do target 175 folks, let's say we get half of the, get them uniformly, linearly throughout the year, you're going to get, the ones who sign up in July, you're going to get 11 months of savings. So practically speaking, if we get these 300 people, DPW is going to receive, you know, they're going to gain funds, not lose funds. The issue is, you don't have a mechanism for accounting for that right now.
They save because less solid waste?
Yeah, exactly. You're taking, I mean, if we got 175 people, you're taking, you know, 70 tons out of solid waste, that's, I mean, real money. And that's every year, by the way, so it's not only saving next year, but.
Okay, so again, I'm kind of, all right, so we could, out of our budget, we could give you 2,000 bucks, and you could go off and try to do it, and the message is to everybody, sign up now and you get the subsidy, wait till June 1.
We don't know.
We don't know, or July, or whatever. And then, for the budgeting purpose of 25, you're saying it's sort of cost neutral, so.
I think it generates a reduction in the costs, right?
Or, and/or if they offer the subsidy, I guess I.
And it is right, if we could choose not to offer the subsidy, then we zeroed out.
But we're in budgeting now, to your point, so I don't know, what do we do? I'm okay with 24, we got the money, great, but I don't understand the action requests for 25.
Well, there's really no action request, they're not for 25, we're just asking for 24.
Okay.
I'm just flagging that there's a potential, but I think it can handle some different ways.
Just, so clarify for me, and so without the subsidy, what is it that a resident would pay to sign up with Black Earth, say, starting in July?
Well, they don't pay, they don't pay anything upfront. They get a reduced monthly fee for six months, so they would pay $20 a month instead of 14 per month.
Pay monthly.
For six months, $36.
Got you, but so somebody's signing up July 1, if we, if we, if the town wasn't subsidizing anything, they would be paying.
$20 a month, right.
$20 a month instead of 14.
That's right.
Over six months.
Unless there's a point, if, you know, if we really are successful, you get, you get way more than 50 people, a couple hundred, now their rates begin to creep down.
Got it, got it, okay. I mean, I'm comfortable going ahead with the 2,100 for FY24.
I just want to, I just want to be clear that we're, we're not taking action, we're not agreeing to anything for FY25 by verdict.
Right.
Yes. Somehow that needs to be memorialized.
Yeah.
The only way, I think, that we could take care of that would be if we decided to do it, it's got to come out of the existing DPW budget, but, I mean, there's no guarantee that we're actually saving that much money. We may get more people in town.
I mean, Ryan, what, what impact would it have on the DPW budget if we were to say FY25, $6,300, if, if it were needed, if, if we weren't reducing the cost faster than we were paying out the subsidy, or what would the impact be on the DPW budget?
They could, they could overrun a line, especially on the Transfer Station side, but for the risk of 6,000, given the size of our budget, I think it's worth trying. I think this is the type of.
So you would put a line item for the subsidy, or you would just assume it, take them at their word and say it's.
So there's, there are some variables in the DPW budget, whether they need vehicle repairs, how much snow and ice comes, so we can reserve 6,000, just in case, and then if we have to make a decision between repairs and this, then we, we would go to the FinCom and beg, essentially, but I agree that this is, this is a best-case scenario. If we get 200 to 300 people to sign up and to use the Transfer Station less, I do think it would be cost neutral, and it's worth trying. Worst case, we're down 6,000, and we don't do it again in FY26.
Yeah.
But it's, we need to reduce costs for waste and sustainability.
No, I agree with all that, I'm just, I'm hearing two different mechanisms. One is you could just, without data, we just take, take them at their word, reduce whatever the tipping fee or whatever we pay for solid waste, buy 6,000, create a line item for this for 6,000, that's a budget neutral. The risk is they overrun the tipping fee category, and they got to pull money from somewhere. Or you could have this catch-all reserve and park it in that and make a trade, right? Is that the two different things?
No, I mean, the mechanism is fairly simple.
Okay.
As long as we don't overrun it by six grand.
The major thing is, we are not increasing their budget by 6,300.
And we're not finding it elsewhere.
But.
But that decision as to whether or not we would even want the subsidy would happen later.
Okay.
We could still decide, we're not doing it, we're not doing the 6,300, so there's no DPW budget issue.
Right.
At all.
We may not have that many people.
Right.
Yeah.
When is the, when are the tipping fees renegotiated? That was quite a while ago, is that a three-year thing or a five-year?
Oh, boy, that was.
I don't know, but I'll get back to you on that.
All right, so do we need a motion on this?
It's not going to be good.
We probably do, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody care to make a motion? To authorize the expenditure of, are you just?
Do you need a 2190?
The 24.
Maybe it's two different things, right?
Let's do that one.
2196.
So I move that the, we approve the request for FY24 for $2,196 to support the Black Earth subsidy.
There's a second?
Do you know, do you want to know to transfer from the select board's account?
We don't need to.
Yeah.
Do you need to say that?
No.
You don't?
No, we haven't usually.
Second.
Get them into submission.
Yeah, so, I guess I'm going to make my statement after we vote, because I don't want it to be associated, I don't want it to seem like I'm associating it with what the transfer station is doing, but I'd like to make a statement after this.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
Okay, so, I think this is good. What I want to make sure, though, is that kind of in the future, we know, like, throughout the year, what all the committees are wanting to do, we know what their priorities are and everything, so that we're not doing something like this just before budget in a year, because it really does get to the thing that we always talk about, which is, whatever comes up gets the funding, whereas other people with good ideas may have not even brought it up. So I think, I think we just need to be really, really careful about doing these in the future and making sure that it is baked into the budget.
Right, so that, well, I mean, that's, I agree with that, and that's, that's sort of a segue to the 25 request, right? In other words, they're saying, well, maybe, maybe not, we're saying, okay, if we agree with it, let's put it in. You never, you don't have to spend what you put in, but you should put in what you think you might spend.
Plan for it.
Right, yeah, and/or, there's a process, you know, there's a really well-known process through which people make these requests, that leverages it against other priorities that we may have had, so that we're not just spending $2,100 that maybe we would have decided some other way of spending that money.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Great point.
All right, do we need a motion for the FY25?
We're not taking it.
No, because we're not doing anything.
We aren't, okay, okay.
Okay, the next two topics are kind of addressed as an overview together. Last year, we had an interesting year. Overall, it was a good year, we had 1,590 tons down again from the prior year. However, we were mentioning that mid-year, things flipped. All of 2022 and half of 2023, we were dropping 12, 15 tons a month versus the prior year. All of a sudden, July 1, it flipped and went the other way, we're increasing 12, 15 tons a month, and we scratched our heads, why was that happening? And we came up with some theories, which proved out not to be true, a very wet summer, making the waste heavier, waning of the transfer station action committee event the October before, none of those fit the data, and I don't know how we missed it, but it was very obvious what happened last May-June, Gary Davis retired. And the enforcement environment also changed after that. The three people most associated with enforcement, which were Gary, who was at the transfer station a lot, Chris Serene, and Tom, are all gone now. And the enforcement in prior years would, I would describe as uneven, and by that, I mean, it didn't treat all residents equally, and that's wrong. And, for example, I mean, I'm sure, I have a rental car and I drive in there, they know me, they're going to let me dump without a sticker. Some other residents, they may recognize and may not let do that, and those things used to happen. I chatted with Ryan about, you know, what's hap, because we now are pretty convinced that it's changed the enforcement environment. The other thing that's happened is Gretchen now is doing the stickers, she is doing a fantastic job with that, and a much more thorough job than has ever been done, and has uncovered all sorts of unique situations, like Kimball's and Westford Business requesting a sticker on their, on their car. And believe it or not, some of these things used to be granted. So, looking at all that, we're now convinced that that increases the enforcement environment, and therefore, some shortcomings in the regulations are pointed out, which we'd like to correct, but those are going to take some time to do, coupled with some operating procedure changes, and we feel a need to address enforcement immediately. So, what's happened already is, the transfer station, as of March 16, started notifying residents of strict enforcement is coming April 2. And so they've been stopping every car that does not have a current sticker, telling them you've got to get one in the next two weeks. And by the way, they normally do that every year, because this is current policy. What they don't normally do after that is then start strict enforcement. And where, T-SAC has voted that we would like support to start strict enforcement in the following way, a two-week grace period, so come April 2, if somebody still shows up without a sticker, once more, the DPW attendant will go to them and say, hey, we're now into the strict enforcement period, we're going to give you two more weeks until April 16, but then we're really going to not allow you to dump. And, and so that we, on April 16, no sticker, no access. If I show up as a T-SAC member, no sticker, no access, you're going to get rejected, so.
Taking no washy.
So that, so we're looking for, select board support for that, and then if that happens, Ryan and Jim will enforce that. In the longer term, the selective enforcement, if you will, enabled us to address a bunch of problems. For example, suppose you have a rental car, and, you know, you had bodywork and your car's in the shop for a month, you should be, you know, if you're a stickered resident, you ought to be able to dump your trash. Gretchen has uncovered some circumstances where a disabled person uses a caretaker to take their trash, and they get vetted through the council on aging. So there's a bunch of special circumstances not anticipated by the regulation, which were handled by the selective enforcement. So we've come up with a placard system, in the longer thing, where basically, a temporary one-month placard be issued for someone with a rental car, a temporary, a three-month temporary for caretaker, these adults be vetted through a process through Town Hall. So to handle those exceptions, which were handled informally before, but inequitively, where some residents would get them and some would not. So what we're looking for tonight is two things, one, to support the concept of strict enforcement, which may produce some pain. I mean, typically, there has been conflict at the transfer station periodically, sometimes involving the police, usually having to do with someone not having a sticker. But, you know, now, there'll be an issue there. So that's, that's what we're looking for in terms of the short term, because, you know, you may start to hear complaints about that. We think if we don't do this, we're talking about 15, 12, 15 tons a month, until we do solve the problem, and roughly a cost of $2,000 a month to the town. So that's the strict enforcement thing. If you go to the next slide, Ryan. So, yeah, so that's kind of, I just kind of walked through that, let's go to the next one. All right, so in terms of the transfer station, before we talk about the strict enforcement in the short term, let's talk about the longer-range plan. Basically, there's several elements to it. One is to modify the transfer station regulation to handle all these special cases. So there is a copy of the new proposed regulation, which has green and red things, and you notice that the major addition to it is at the end, which has provisions for rental cars, temporary placard, if you will, caretaker for a disabled person, a financial hardship situation, and then a catch-all, if there's other special circumstances arise we haven't contemplated where we could do that. The basic idea is that the issuer of stickers, the regular issuer, would not handle special cases, they would just buy and sell stickers, part of this is proposing that be given back to police dispatch, and so we'll talk about why that is the case in a minute. But basically, if it's anything other than a regular sticker from an identified resident, it would go to the Town Hall designated employee, which currently is Gretchen, to adjudicate and hand out, you know, one of these placards or something. In terms of implementing this, there are several gating items. We've already begun the public education, because the DPW staff is out there doing it, we've had Oracle and Literate the Mosquito, City in the Woods, so that's already begun. We obviously need to get the regulation approved by the select board, because it doesn't take effect until we do. We do have an interim placard solution, which I got to go through with Gretchen, I promised it off Ryan, I'm going to have T-SAC vote on it on April 3, but we have a solution for that, which is solve these special cases. The one thing that cannot be put in place very quickly is the police dispatch. Ryan has said, basically, he thinks July 1 is the earliest that police could pick that up. And that's really important, because if you're turning someone away Saturday morning, they can't go to Town Hall and get a sticker, and so they're not going to be happy about that. But, you know, they've had two and a half months to get it, so, you know, it's, but, you know, if the police are doing it, then they could, you could just send them down to the police station a mile away, get your sticker, and all's good. So the sooner we can get that, the sooner, the better it is in that regard. So in terms of the other aspects of the general regulation, Gretchen pointed out, for example, in the very first sentence, we had to write intended. And so when she was, had a commercial user come up with wanting a sticker, she felt she could not, not give it to him, because the word intended is not, was not strong enough. You know, I mean, intended implies, we'd like you to behave like this, but it just like, we intend you don't get the red light, but if you do, you know, that's not the language. So anyway, intended is gone, that's the first change we made. We very specifically said no commerc, there's a line, simple one sentence, eliminating no commercial waste is acceptable. Go ahead.
So I wanted to ask you about that. So what about, like, firms in town, and they have commercial waste, how do they then dispose?
Well, they don't use us right now, anyway. What happens now commercially is, again, it's an uneven situation, most of the commercial entities do not put their, you send their waste to the transfer station, they use commercial things as our regulation currently calls them to do. But a few have gotten away with it, if you do, and I'm not going to mention them here, but, and that's wrong, I mean, either we do or we don't, and right now, we do for some and not for others, and historically, I don't know how that's happened, but that's, that's been the history.
So a business in town would need to haul it, have it individually?
Use commercial, so, yeah, so, I mean, firms, Kimball's, Assurance Technology, these folks, vast majority of them have their own services that they pay for, for commercial waste, and that's, so we're just clarifying that. That's always been the intent, but now, now I want to make it clear that that's.
Just to dive into that a little bit further, I can see why some of the larger commercial, some of the larger commercial entities may use trash holders and, or, you know, like that, but some smaller ones who may have property, who are paying property tax and buy a sticker, you know, because we're not talking about, like, the construction, like, construction debris or things like that, we're talking about, like, bringing trash bags.
No, we're talking, it's all of it, there are, there are commercial construction companies in town who basically are bringing commercial trash to the transfer station.
Right, so I can see making a distinction about, like, construction debris and things like that, but, you know, the Rollins Insurance Agency can't, you know, has to do a holler, or, I'm just trying to think of other, you know, small commercial in towns.
We tried, we tried to come up with a line of what was okay to do, and it's a very slippery slope, we could not define that, a line which was, which, you know, which clarified as to who could do what and when, so, I mean, we certainly could attempt to do that, but we couldn't come up with that, so it's a very slippery slope.
Uh-huh.
Now, you know, historically, there are very small businesses who primarily produce paper and cardboard, and typically, the town has made, makes money, still makes money on cardboard, loses a little on paper, about break even, so, you know, that kind of incidental activity, no one's going to enforce that. But if a commercial business produces goods and that, and that process generates trash, that's really commercial trash, I mean, that's not.
But how are you going to, how are you going to determine that? I was thinking, some of the local, you know, contractors in town, and if they pull in and they say, I'm a resident here.
Or daycare center.
And here's my, my boards and stuff, I just was working on my house.
No system is perfect, and obviously, you're putting stuff in opaque bags, so folks, folks are not supposed to, it's illegal to put recyclables in the trash, yet we know, you know, 10% of them or 20% are going in there. So one, and, you know, without inspection, which we're not proposing we do, it's not cost-effective, you're not going to enforce everything, it's a question of having rules where you can, you know.
Start to.
And there's always an honor system aspect, I mean, the fact that you don't throw aluminum cans and glass bottles is an honor system, use it to pick bag and you get away with it, no one's going to inspect that. And by the way, the state doesn't expect you to inspect that, the state understands that that's part of the game. Ultimately, they do inspect our trash going into the, you know, on a random basis, going into the incinerator, and there you can get rejected. We've never been rejected for excess recyclables in the trash, we've been rejected for radiation.
This is cost, you know, if we're trying to reduce cost, we're trying to, you know, reduce the amount of waste going in.
Yeah. The emphasis, and I think it's clear in the regulation, the emphasis is on, the transfer station is for residential trash.
Right. Okay.
As opposed to commercial. And they're not going to make any effort to, you know, they're not trying to make it hard for folks, but it's, there's some, obviously, commercial activity right now, which is.
Yes.
A problem.
Yeah, the end of that first sentence says it, right, it's the use of Carlisle residents for trash and recycling, which originates in residences located in Carlisle due to normal household.
That's the current regulation, that's the current regulation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's.
By the way, almost every town, local town, has that, that word, yeah.
Okay.
So in terms of, most of the other changes are relatively small, we added firearms and boats to, to forbid material, because one person bought a whole boat in last summer, so that was added in. Two tons.
Wow.
And it was, you know, Jim said, it's not on the list, I couldn't say no. So, and the other thing we did is we put a limit of two stickers per residence.
I was going to ask about that.
And where they can apply for more, the reason is somebody requested eight, and they got eight.
I got five.
For the price of one?
It's, again, the key there is that if you want more than two, you're going to have to go to Gretchen and explain it, and then, you know, if some people have a third child with a car, you know, whatever they want to do, as long as it's not commercial.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I mean, so I do have five.
That's fine.
Probably own too many cars, but.
That's fine.
I've got kids that have the car, and it's registered in my name, and I want them to be able to go to the.
Yeah, there are about, I've got the numbers, there's about, about half the town has one sticker, about another 35% has two stickers, and about 25 to 30 folks have three or more stickers, it's fairly small, but, you know, again, if they're for non-commercial purposes, they'll be able to get one from Gretchen.
How do we know, like, I mean, it's just more money, right? You know, if it's, if it's just another sticker for the same household, so what you're.
What's going to happen is you're going to go to, I mean, I'll give you an example, a resident went to Gretchen, who asked for a lot of stickers, and she talked to them about that, what they wanted for, and it's clear to her that, in her mind, this was not about having a couple of kids, you want to give stickers, it was other than that. And so she's going to make a determination, that, you know, if it's, if you just have a couple more cars, but it's still residential use, and you're not increasing the kind of trash you bring, she'll do it. But if she says, I mean, again, I, there are all sorts of exceptions she found out, but there's all special cases, but.
Okay.
So if it's for residential household trash, you'll be fine.
Okay. So it's not really a limit of two stickers, it's, you can get two stickers, you can get more than two, you can get two without anything.
Right.
You can get more than two if you talk to Gretchen.
Right, that's right. What we're trying to do is we're trying to set a regulation which makes it easy for Gretchen and the DPW to do that, which is normal, and then when there are special cases, to handle, to restrict that to handling Gretchen, not the police dispatch, because there has been an issue historically with how stickers have been issued, and there's been serious problems there. And so we need to separate out the issuance of an easy sticker from a special case, requires more handling.
Okay, so then I just think we need to have that whole exception process in here in the process?
It is, yes, it's the last, if we go to the.
The identification, the sticker section?
Well, no, this, we could, there's four exceptions at the very end of the document, they're all put together, four paragraphs. There's autos, disabled auto, the disability of a person, there's the financial hardship, and then the other catch-all category is the one that would cover the stickers and things like that, and there may be a few other cases of that nature.
Okay, but it specifically says a third sticker. I'm just thinking, if, if somebody didn't feel that they couldn't tell somebody, they couldn't come in with commercial because of the word intent, if this, you know, if this is only three, then somebody, whoever's doing this says, no, you can only have one extra one.
Where are you seeing only three?
The last paragraph of the whole.
The last paragraph.
Residents may request issuance of a sticker.
Issuements of additional stickers may be requested.
Rather than a third sticker.
Of a sticker, I see, yeah, just add in additional.
Additional stickers.
Additional stickers, okay, yeah, that's the intention of that, yeah, that's the intent.
I think that's a pretty good change.
Yeah, that's fine, I think that's good, yeah.
Okay.
I would say, having listened to 1,200 of these being purchased in the last three months, the exceptions that you're trying to rule out with this policy are glaringly obvious, and I think a lot of people, when they're looking at this policy, picture the way they go to the transfer station, that's not the person that's going to be, is not going to be hemmed up in this process, it's not strict enforcement on people who use it, it's, it's people who are, who are costing the town thousands of dollars because they have multiple stickers, and that needs to stop. But it's not the resident who has their college student coming home that we're looking to say, no, you can't have that on your, that's not what we're doing. It's very difficult to enforce, once the stickers are given at the, at the transfer station, to say this is commercial trash versus not, even though the employees know that, that there are hundreds of dollars' worth of dumping going on, that they can't stop. So if the intent of the transfer station is to allow anyone to dump anything, then the more loose you make it, the easier that is, if it's to allow residents to do what they need to do, then tight actually helps most residents.
Yeah, and I'm totally supportive of that, as long as we're not precluding the exceptions from being made.
Yeah, I mean, our intent here is, we've tried, we've tried to identify the exceptions we're aware of, I'm sure we missed some, you know, we happen to be aware of the disability one, because Gretchen had a case where someone came in with a caretaker, you know, two weeks ago, and handled it, and she made an excellent decision in that process, did it, and we've added in here. I'm sure there's some other special cases we haven't considered, and, you know, those will, that's dealt with fourth clause, and if it's a broad enough case, we may come back and add, want to add a paragraph there.
The next thing is this policy, so we can change it.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, we're, five minutes over time. I do have one question, though, and that is about Massachusetts state law prohibits recyclable items from being disposed of in household waste. What are the consequences, if you do?
I mean, that's just a restatement, someone has to put a restatement of law, but that's, I mean, the consequences, typically, right now, there are no consequences.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem.
The only consequences are to the town, if, as a result of resident behavior, we had a load rejected at the incinerator, then there's consequences, we're going to have then there's consequences. We're gonna have to take that load back here, dump it on the floor, and fix it. So, and it's a real con, we have never had that.
All right, and the only other thing is, down at the, in the second section, transfer station identification, identification sticker, you do say bumper, driver's side, but in the first paragraph, it says it has to be permanently affixed to the front bumper, but you don't say where, and I, I think it would be a repeating there, say, on the front bumper, on the driver's side.
Okay.
So that people don't have to look, you know, because if they only read that part, they might put it on the other side, and
I was actually gonna suggest one change to that language here, based upon, our thought is that next year, we might see if we could move to a window sticker to get away from the placard thing, potentially. And so, what I was gonna suggest we add to that is, or, an alternative display that's acceptable to the, you know, to the DPW, because that may change. Otherwise, we'll have to revise this next year, and that's not a problem, not a big deal, but
Revises it next year.
I think that's, I think, I think that that would be fine, because I know that some people don't wanna put the sticker on their bumper, and they want it, so they put it up on their window.
Right, well, what's already happened for the strict enforcement, when Jim started the enforcement process last, a couple of weeks ago, he flagged that, he said, this is gonna be a real problem if you don't let folks do it, because some have already taken their stickers, affixed to a placard, and can't put it in their bumper. So, what we agreed in the meanwhile was that we would support, you know, a placard, either their placard or our placard, in the strict enforcement phase, but we don't wanna put that in a regulation, because that's something, we do encourage that.
But you'd like to make that addition you just mentioned to this current proposed set of regulations?
Okay, I mean, I
Are you, is that
I'm proposing.
Hearing?
Yeah, yeah, proposing that, that's what I heard.
And are we voting on this tonight, or we, this is?
Yeah, I don't see why we're
Great if we're good, yeah, I mean
So the, so your amendment is, wherever it says, must have an identification sticker, affixed to the front bumper, that first sentence under transfer station ID sticker.
Right.
You would put a phrase in there that says, or
Or displayed in an alternate manner as defined by the DPW.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and that's, that is covered under our motion here, so, if somebody would like to make that motion?
I just wanted to say, so, the strict enforcement, you know, until very recently, you know, at the beginning of the year, around March, the police actually used to be out at the end, and, you know, I can remember more than one year when I'd drive up there, and I'd go whoop, and I'd turn around, and I'd go I'd go to the police station, and the nice thing is that I could buy it right at the police station. But, so that, that strict enforcement shouldn't be new to people who have been around for a little while. But what's going to be bad is the police station. Because now you have all your stuff in the car, and you can't just zip down to the police station.
That's why the sooner, the sooner we get the police involved, the better.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it is what it is.
So I'm happy to, or, does somebody else wanna make the motion?
Did you have something?
Did I do it?
Okay, go.
I move that we accept the transfer station regulations and policies amendments as presented in the packet with the additional amendment as suggested by Tom Bellata. You want me to do, yeah, that's it.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and we've already done the
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, and so, we do have your support for the strict enforcement, just wanna make sure that
Yes.
Okay, great, excellent, thanks.
Okay. Let's go twenty-five budget discussion. So, FinCom, you come and open your meeting.
Hey, everyone.
Hi.
Hi there.
Another opening meeting.
Yes. So I just wanna, go ahead and open your meeting.
I would like to open the meeting for the finance committee, if we could have a roll call of people in attendance, starting with those on the phone, please.
Liang here. Bernstein here.
Contagio here.
Wipinski here, meeting is open.
Okay, I just wanna notify everybody that this is a public input session, which we're holding joint, so that when we get to various places, I'll be asking for public input as well.
Okay?
Perfect.
All right, who wants to start to get back to the budget?
Do you wanna
Do you want Brian or Lynn to start us off?
The budget, as we discussed in the last meeting, which you wanna bring that up, or do you wanna
Sure.
Okay. I can just kinda give you some highlights from the conversation that we had this week. There were three items to note that have come back from our last meeting, and the first one was around, which I've, probably most of you have seen, it was a memo from the Board of Health, requesting that they were having difficulty in reducing the budget as we had recommended. However, there was a, it was a, I wanna say revelation, but they do have an additional seven K in hauling fees that they had, that would go into their revolving fund.
Five to six, Lynn, five to six.
Five to six, okay, sorry, five to six thousand, it's called a hauling fee, is that correct?
Yeah, there were several identified fees.
Yeah, and they're not fees that have any direct expense related to them, so the, so they, we had two options. One is to either take it directly out of the revolving fund, that money would go into a revolving fund and come out anyway, or just put that full five to six into the general fund, and then just have them, have their makeup for their overrun from those fees. So from our perspective, from FinCom's perspective, we recommend that that's what we do. That money goes into general fund, and apply their overrun, and whatever the additional monies that are available, will just go against the operating budget. So that was item number one.
Does that, so, Lynn, so if we do it that way, then they come in at the three percent, or, well, they overrun the three percent, but net to the town, it's
Right, it's a net, that's right, yeah, that's exactly right.
I'm sorry, so, that does then bring them
Let me help, the actual operating budget will be the one they originally submitted.
Requested, okay.
Right, so it's, it's higher than the three, than what we were, what we wanted, but they're gonna give money back to the town.
It's gonna be revenue.
It'll be revenue, so it has the same effect
Okay.
overall.
Gotcha.
And will we track that year over year?
So they were already receiving this revenue, they're just giving you it back?
But the baseline sets higher, and so next year, maybe that's where Nathan's going. Next year, that means peanuts, but next year
Yes.
Say it's another three percent.
Next year, we're expecting that same amount of money back.
No, not necessarily, right?
Exactly.
Let's say next year, they come in at three, let's say, next year, we do the same thing, everybody's gotta be three. They come in at three, no give backs, but they've set the baseline somewhat higher.
Yeah, right.
So there's no way to claw that back, I mean, that's, that's there.
Well, unless we track it.
Well, but three percent of five thousand dollars is sort of in the noise, so
Yes.
Three percent of five thousand.
Right. So, I don't think
And you're thinking this is a good way to go?
No, it's not three percent of five thousand.
What was your thinking on
Well, the rationale was
It's five thousand.
If they were reluctant, which I'm not quite sure, but if they were reluctant to take that money out of their revolving fund, that would have an impact on the operating budget. It didn't make sense, where we have funds available that we can tap into, why would we increase our operating budget with ultimately impacts that's there? So that was really the rationale of this. I have some other thoughts that I will share with you around the revolving funds, and how this impacts the operating budget going forward, that I'd like you to all consider for the future, and for the future FinCom as well. The next one is COA, and the COA had felt like they had underprojected their budget a bit, and wanted to change it. However, we're recommending that we keep the budget as is. They end up having this small overrun, it could be around three thousand, I think?
So, it was a, it was money that I had identified as potential for cuts, not that they're an under run. So, I think they're gonna come in three thousand
Less.
Less than what they projected. So last year, you increased the council on aging driving wages by eleven thousand dollars. I, I don't think they'll hit that, and I made the point to FinCom that there are four gift accounts that could backfill in case that did go over.
Four COA gift accounts?
Correct.
Yes, so, we're just recommending to hold at what they've projected of, which will be a little, obviously, less than we, they had anticipated. And again, you know, worst-case scenario, there's a couple of options here. One, they have several gift accounts they can tap into, it's not a lot of money. And two, which we've had in the past, if we needed to make a transfer, we would deal with that in a timely way. But there is, there is money we can tap into, so there's no need to
So their budget as submitted is in line?
I would suggest cutting it by three thousand for the drivers' wages.
What do you cut then?
The transportation driver wages.
That's what we're talking about.
I see.
And, and you're saying, yes, that's what the FinCom thinks we should do, cut that transportation line?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree. And we feel pretty comfortable, like Ryan said, that we should be able to meet that easily. And if not, if there is that overrun
They go fight.
It is plenty of resources
Gotcha.
To make that short follow-up.
So we're not gonna cut service if this is a problem?
No.
But the little blurb here in the narrative says, we do not have confirmation from COAHS that they can offset the three K. I don't know, is that a, what does that mean? They haven't identified it, or they don't think they can do it?
It means, I was asked to identify places in the budget. This is a place.
Right, but they themselves don't, is this guided discovery of us to them, like, to teach them how to do it, or do they truly not know whether they have it?
I haven't discussed it with them. I didn't know if this was something that you would support.
Well, let's say we support it, but then there's some education.
David, this goes into my commentary after this.
Okay.
We're gonna need exact point out.
Okay, all right. But, and, sorry, just, so at the end of all this, we're gonna, you produced a budget, that change is reflected. That reduction is in that little budget that's at the end?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, got it.
The third piece is, as we all know, is the Concord, Concord Carlisle High School. So, I'm happy to say, I think everybody's kinda followed the progress here, we've made some really good strides, we're very aligned with them, they're great to work with, the select board as well, we all, this is really a beginning, I think this is a beginning of how, the way we should be doing this moving forward. We've, we've had several discussions with Concord and with, with the school as well. They have come back with, which I'm assuming all of you have seen, a memo that outlines why they cannot dig any deeper into their pockets. They're taking a huge chunk out of E and D money, and they don't, they're not comfortable taking that. So, we feel that it is just prudent to have one more conversation with them. We're shooting for next Tuesday to do a virtual with them, to dig a lot, a little deeper into asking a few more questions. So, where we are with the budget right now is, we have not made any reductions, so the assumption is, with the, with the budget, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're gonna look at, that there is no more reductions in that budget until we see what happens on Tuesday. I don't have high expectations, but I think it's prudent to do that. We need to press the issue. I think it's our responsibility, that is the second highest budget for the town, and we need to be asking more questions, we need to be digging a little deeper. And so, this is really kinda the beginning, so that's where we're at on the, on the high school.
But, okay, a couple of different things. So, this has really nothing to do with the amenities building, that's sort of a simple thing.
No, this is operating all.
Right, so you say we're at the beginning of the process, but we're actually at the end of the process in terms of the fiscal
Well, when I say beginning of the process, David, I mean the relationship.
Okay.
This is the first year
Multi-year, this is, so you're, okay.
I think this is, we have just started the momentum, this is just the beginning. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of traction in aligning ourselves.
But are we aligning ourselves with the regional school committee, the regional administration, the Concord FinCom, or all of the above, or what?
I mean, ideally, in Nirvana, all of the above, but I think
They themselves are not, I mean
Correct, coming out of the gate, I'm, what I saw this year was, there was a lot of alignment between FinCom, and a lot of alignment between the select board.
In Concord?
In Concord.
Okay.
Right, but against the wishes of the regional, right.
Although, I have to say that with, with us coming on board, I have seen a little more attitude of reconciliation. I, they do, it's not that they don't want
The they you're talking about is the
They needing school
School committee and the administration.
And the administration.
So the, the school committee and the administration are more or less aligned, right?
Absolutely.
It's like here, right?
Well, not totally, they weren't on the amenities building.
The school committee and the school administration work pretty closely.
Yeah, you didn't mean the town administration.
No, I didn't say the town administration.
No, I, I was thinking, okay.
The school side lines up, it's like here, the school side pretty much lines up, and then we pretty much line up, and then we have some kind of negotiation. So that's probably parallel down there. You're saying we're sort of lining up with the town side.
Select board and FinCom, yeah.
Cause I, I mean, I think that's, personally, I think that's the way to do it, because it's very hard, having served in those committees at the region, it's pretty hard for the minority member to get much leverage on the school side. Historically.
Historically, but you know, in retrospect, I mean, this is my last year, and I feel very, I feel like we really lost a lot of time. I think that if we had gotten into this much earlier, there is strength in numbers, and even, you know, we're not, you know, we are still almost, we're eight thousand, we're eight million dollars of that budget. So, we have a say, and we should be able to ask the questions, and if we don't agree, we don't, we don't necessarily have to go along with it, and I think that's really important. I think we have to be present, we have to be there, and we have to show solidarity to really move this forward. And Concord, although they're a bigger town, they are faced with the exact same issues we're faced with. They haven't put any money in their infrastructure, they're looking at much larger expenditures than we are in terms of facilities. They are in the same boat, we are, but on a much larger scale.
Right, but I, you know, I agree with everything you're saying, I'm just, I wanna be clear. The leverage comes through the town of Concord. The town of Concord faces the same budgetary pressures that all the small communities in Cornwall face, and we talk about it all the time. The school, and I don't, I, I love the schools and the school committees, and I think we have a fine educational product, but they don't have to collect the tax. So, the, the pain point is not quite, they, everybody recognizes philosophically that you have to be budgetary conscious, and everybody tries, but at the end of the day, if the teachers say, raise their hand and say, we need X, the school committees tend, committees, including ours, tend to say, yeah, okay, I agree, you need X. It's for us
And our
And our counterparts in Concord to say, wait a minute, that's great, but there's a trade, like, if you do that, we have to say no to the next dump truck or something, right? We're the ones that have to make that trade. So, I agree with you, I think that the way we, cause you said something, we don't actually legally have that much leverage on the operating budget, despite the fact that we're eight million. That's so sad. So, if we're gonna get advocacy, it's through that pressure point of the, their town saying, no, this is too much. And, you know, from my own experience that goes back to two thousand eight, nine, ten, where we were really in dire straits, it was a tough call, because we were in a tougher situation than Concord was, and they kinda listened to us, but, eh, sort of. But I think if we're all in the same situation now, it's, I agree with you, it's a much stronger play, and that is the right way to do it, and, so great, I mean, I think
Yeah, you know, I really think, I mean, Kate was really a big proponent of it, and, and they were thrilled, I mean, Fin, the FinCom and select board were thrilled we were part of it. Like, they couldn't be more welcome.
Good, excellent.
A good start to a good working relationship, I think, so, anyway.
See, you didn't mention the fourth thing, though, which is our own schools, because they've also made a trade, right?
Yes, yes, and that was really, that, and that's the other piece of this, too, is that everybody really has stepped up to the plate, and, you know, our school has really made a great effort, they really sharpened their pen, pencils, and they really did a good job, I have to say, I really commend them, and they really worked very well. Victor is their liaison, worked tirelessly with them, and they really wanted to make it happen, not Victor, sorry, Eric.
I was gonna say.
Sorry, I'm wrong, sorry, sorry, Victor.
The other, the other Victor.
They really wanted to, you know, make it work without compromising any services, so I really have to commend Jim and his staff for doing that.
And their school committee, and just so that people are clear
Yes.
It's a somewhat parallel situation to Board of Health?
With the lunch fund?
Well, in that they're making a reduction, they're giving, so the school lunch fund taking on some benefits, so their, their budget line over line may not show the full three, you know, reduction, but to the town coffers, it'll net down to the three percent, because, thanks to Ryan who identified it, we're utilizing an underspent school lunch fund to fund some of the benefits of the school lunch workers. That's a town pick.
Right.
Is that I say that right?
Yeah.
Just at the beginning of these conversations, but this is something, as a committee, we really hope that you will take under very serious advisement, and that is, the concept that we have in this town of several, and I'm gonna call them, they're not all called this, but I'm gonna call it revolving funds, and we're not picking on any departments at all, but the reality is, many departments have this money, the, these are, these are, these are accounts that just keep growing and growing and growing, they are, they are not what they're supposed to be, meaning money in and money out. Some of them have very large sums of money at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year, they're not being utilized. And what's happening is, because that money is not being tapped at all, we are looking at the operating budgets, and we're increasing monies, and, yeah, you could say that some of these might, at the end of the day, have five thousand here and six thousand there, but when you add that up, that could translate to one, one and a half percent of taxpayer increases. And at the end of the day, this money is not department money, this money is the town money, and it belongs to the taxpayers. And I strongly, I think you can probably tell, I'm strongly against having these funds for a few reasons. One is, it, we are not, we don't have full transparency of all the money that the town has, number one. Number two, we don't also have full transparency to all their operating budgets, because what's happening sometimes in some cases are, people are using that money to supplement their own budgets.
But are they, isn't it more the opposite case, that they're not using them? We're trying to push them to use them, right?
For the most part, they're not, but in some cases, they are, they are using it. They might be to increase hours for somebody, whatever the case may be, there are some accounts where money is being used, and leveraged for that. The other piece of this, too, is that when they have access to funds like that, they are making decisions that may not be aligned with the town. So, for example, if somebody has a very large amount of money, they may make a unilateral decision to purchase something capital, which is not a priority. So it really is diluting our ability to So, it really is diluting our ability to fully manage the town finances. So, I'll stop there, but this is something that's always been something I have never supported from the first day coming out.
Go ahead, cause I.
Well, I was just gonna ask, so what, what would be the appropriate change if we wanted to not have this situation going forward?
So, the appropriate change would be, and this is not the case for every single fund, Ryan has more knowledge than I do, but for the ones that it is applicable to, that money would just go into the general fund.
At the end of the fiscal year, you mean, when it's, whatever's there goes into the?
Well, that's one way to do it, we, there's a couple of ways to slice this, right? One is, you could cap, if you wanted to keep the revolving funds, you could cap it, so they only have so much at the end of the year. The other option is that you completely abolish those, and the money goes right into the general fund for usage for the town.
The, the reason why we have those fees is to recoup the cost of managing the process, right?
That's the concept.
So, so if we're not doing that, so I mean, would it make sense to have it, but account for it? And it, it is what pays for the operating budget for that department? And therefore, we can set those fees based upon how much it's actually costing us.
You bring up a great point, that's exactly right, Nathan, because what that does is it pushes the envelope and gives transparency. There have been some, I know that there were some departments where fees just haven't even been touched for years. And that's exactly what it brings out, is the transparency of, if you're using an outside service, but you've got an offset fee, you're able to calibrate that, and say, "Wait a minute, we need to increase these fees," you know, for the money.
Is there, but I guess, it might be a Ryan question, is there a statutory imperative that you, you have to create a revolver, like a fifty-three and a half? Or can we, let's say, REITCon, I mean, they get, you know, camp fees, and then they pay counselors, like my kids. So, could we statutorily say, "No, Holly, put all the camp fees, all the expenses into your operating budget, and by the way, all the checks go to Town of Carlisle, and it's just extra revenue for us?" Or do you have to create this little revolver?
Of course, the answer depends, department to department, but in most cases, there isn't a statutory requirement.
There is not.
So, the planning board, for example, they take in fees and permits in order to engage with developers and contractors. So, we hold the money in escrow in order to protect the town. In the Board of Health's case, they are taking in funds and then paying our contracted engineers in order, in order to.
I know, yeah.
So, you don't have to contract engineer, you can have your own engineer, you could.
Oh, I, right, but you don't, I mean, what I'm asking is, you don't have to create a separate fund. You could, as long as you're tracking, you can track internally, right? You don't need a fund to track, right?
Right, yeah.
It was into me, like, the transparency is important, and I think that, you know, so I completely agree with you. It's just how, how we implement it. If we have the fees coming in, that's not money that throughout the year that department can choose to spend in a particular way, it shouldn't be. That's money that we use to offset the cost of that department. And if the fees outweigh the cost of the department, then we're charging too much. If it's not enough, then it doesn't necessarily mean we increase the fee. But, you know, that's one way to try to offset that. But if we just take all the money and we put it into the general fund, and we don't account at all for where it came from and what it's costing us for each of those departments, I think it's, where, you know, number one is gonna, we're gonna lose the transparency, but we're also not gonna learn anything.
Right, but you don't have to.
You can account for it by part, yeah.
You don't need a whole fund to do that, you just do a line items on it.
I'm not suggesting.
Nobody's suggesting to just take the money and not account for it.
Right. Yeah, it's not like it's, when we say go into the general fund, it gets earmarked, just like an expenditure.
Right, right.
If the Board of Health has an expenditure in CONSCOM, we know where those expenditures are coming from, the same thing with that revenue. So, it's almost like separate P and Ls.
Right, but what I'm suggesting is that, that revenue for that use is directly offsetting in the operating budget for that department at budget time.
Right, that's the analysis you run, but I think you said it correctly, and so did Lynn. It's like a little P and L, or a cost center. So, Board of Health, or Board of Health says, you know, "It's costing me this much, and by the way, I'm generating this much revenue, so the net cost of the town is X." You track all that, at the end of the year, you say, "Well, gee, you didn't collect, your true cost related to that were less than what you collected, you need to adjust your fees," or the other way, and okay, fine. But, but there's never a case where we don't, having collected the fees, we cover the cost regardless. I mean, we can change it each year, but we don't, we don't say to some guy who put in a thousand dollars for something, "Sorry, it costs more, we need more from you, he paid his fee, so he gets it." So, I agree with you, and then that would eliminate this little extra gate, right? And it would allow us more flexibility. So, as long as there's not a statutory thing, I think that's a great idea.
I also don't think we necessarily have to collect all of the cost of a department in fees, because it is also a service that the town offers, right? So, I don't think that.
I'm not saying it has to be neutral. We, to your point, we may make a, you know, decision that, we, say again, I'll use summer camp, that we don't wanna charge the residents the full cost of summer camp, we subsidize it effectively.
Right, like we don't charge residents the full char, cost of the transfer station.
Right, exactly, exactly right, that's a good example.
So, the, the council on aging transportation is a, is a great case study in this, and in no way am I suggesting that that's not a great service that we provide, or that we should cut, or it's just an example. So, we pay an assessment to Lowell Regional. Lowell Regional gives us basically that, that money back in order to, to operate. So, we ran out of those funds in January, so then the town starts to pay for, for those transportation services, which is the nineteen thousand that you increased in wages, plus the transportation manager. So, we take on thirty, forty percent of those fees. The, the other side of it is, we, we don't charge for that service, and I'm not saying we should, but you can. And a lot of people offset with fees, those costs. There's also a transportation gift account, and then other funds that people pay into in order to provide senior services. So, there is many ways to pay for senior transportation, and many policy decisions in that. The town has chosen to just completely subsidize it without, well, there is a twenty dollar donation for, for certain services, but those services are, are decided by the town, and the only control over it is the budget process.
But you brought up another good point, which is when you get to gift accounts.
Yeah.
You can't tell, if I wanna write a check to COHS to pay for the van, you don't, I don't want that getting thrown into the pot of paying for the big salaries of the Select Board, right? So, I think.
So, my only, my only, this is my recommendation to the town, is that those gift accounts be used as backstops. So, if you budget tighter and take more risk on, and you overrun, then you have those accounts to make sure the service runs, and then you can adjust your budget. Instead of just accumulating money in that account.
Right.
You use it as a way to pencil out.
Right, so I think that's a fair point, and that's kinda where you're going with everything, is hey, hey, departments, look at all these balance sheet surpluses you have. If, I mean, that's what we talked about over the last few months, right? If you're going to, I mean, there's a lot of ways to do it, but the way we sort of adopted here this year was, the thing is three percent. If you want to spend more than three percent, please come back with a plan to use
Yes.
other sources of money to get, to close again, which they kinda did, right?
So, so the net is, so that, this is great, I'm glad that the conversation has started, this, this is gonna be a lot of work done for that. But I think this is really gonna be, I don't wanna say game changer, but I think this is gonna be significant in terms of just the whole budgeting process and the complete transparency of the operating budget. So, the net of everything that we discussed today, Ryan, and keeping honest here, I think we landed at around three point one.
Yep, so just, so you can visualize it, the, you've seen this before, but these are all of the, the cuts that people made. The, the recommendation was from this board and the FinCom to get to three percent or to look at accounts where there are revolving or other sources of revenue that you could tap. So, there are a few departments here that were under that three percent, but had money to give back, and we talked to them about it, and, and they did. So, the, the revenue, this is the school lunch account, they're giving back to the health insurance, so we reduce that, that budget, or increase the revenue, however you wanna look at it. Transfer station, which has, I don't think you took that vote tonight.
I didn't talk that tonight.
They increased.
You didn't ask, offer that up in your recommending?
It's not a proposal yet, about the sticker fee.
Is it going to be?
Yeah, but it wouldn't be effective till January twenty-five anyway, right? Cause we, it would be a half a year's.
Is it aside from the diversion, but is that a Select Board vote, or?
Yeah.
So, that is a potential vote that has been discussed by the TSEC. And then the, the other cuts, which I know are not ancillary, but you've seen them before. Here is the Board of Health, they were asked to find five thousand, they end up giving six thousand back and found revenue that showed up. And then, this was the council on aging discussion. So, total, that is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand-ish in cuts, which brings the deficit to around thirty thousand, which is a number you've heard before. So, that's.
We were hoping that would be coming from the high school, cause if they brought their overall budget down to the three percent that Concord asked for, it would be about twenty-five thousand coming to us.
So, these bottom tabs, all of those changes were made in the department level, which translated to this budget request, which is three point zero seven percent increase. Here, you'll see the six thousand for Board of Health, so we took that out of expense and put it in revenue.
You put transfer sticker revenue in there, too?
In here, yep.
For half a year.
So, that's the twenty thousand increase there?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a half a year's worth.
For like half a year, starting January of twenty-five?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's increasing it from what to what?
And House one state aid is.
Been decided, but.
Yeah.
Well, we have a number, so we have a.
Number I've heard is twenty-five to forty-five.
House one state aid is higher than you originally?
No, much lower.
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 So, that's not good.
But that's a real number from the governor's budget. That could go up or down, depending on how the budget goes. In fact, the regional school, in their memo, stated that they lost revenue. What really happened was they projected revenue high, and state came in lower, and then that created the deficit, so.
Eighty-four thousand.
They didn't lose money, they just overprojected it, so the.
So, we're at three point one here in the.
Is that right, three point one?
It's three point one is the end of the.
Where do we think, like, capital items and everything would come in? But that's in addition to this three point one, right?
So, the, I can show you that? So, capital would not affect the tax rate if you used the, the free cash plan. So, you would be using excess reserves for capital. So, that would be.
Would that be able to be continued in future years? Or next year, would we have to cover what we had offset this year?
So, the idea is that the revenues are projected, and the expenses are projected in a way to generate around five hundred thousand in free cash, which would be above and beyond your twelve percent. And then, anything excess of that would also be used to offset capital. So, you have been generating around five hundred thousand a year pretty consistently. The more you cut into your budget, and the more you overproject your revenues, the smaller that pie gets. It's all connected, as you're pointing out. So, the capital plan articles, assuming that each one of these is to your liking, would be six hundred and fifty for capital in the departments. This fire engine debt would be authorized, but would not hit the operating budget for probably a couple of years, given the backlog. And then, the MFC article, which is a capital article under the MFC's control, is five hundred and ten thousand. You have seventy-four thousand five hundred in warrant article requests in the current warrant.
Was bog house repairs that high?
No, it's bog and house repairs.
Oh, bog and house repairs.
Yes.
So, the trade there was the twelve thousand you saw come out of the CONSCOM budget went into that article.
But it's ten grand or something from the house, right?
That was what we talked about.
So.
Yeah, is that, is that right, what's in that figure?
Ten thousand.
Is ten thousand, and the remainder is for CONSCOM maintenance.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, the operating budget has a hundred thousand free cash, the capital plan is one point one million. You saw the seventy-four, five in warrant articles, for a total use of one point two eight five million, which puts you at twelve point eight three percent reserve to operating budget, which gives you an, an additional three hundred thousand to what I'm recommending, put in capital stabilization for either future capital to offset any needs, or to offset the cost of any future buildings that might be authorized or not.
And that's just, again, we've had this conversation, that's sort of contrary to Lynn's philosophy. So, we're creating a little pool of money that's not general.
Dedicated pool.
But you like it because it.
Has a purpose.
Well, everything has a purpose.
Well.
So, I don't, so I don't think that's true. So, there are revolving accounts where we say, it is perfectly fine that you have fifty thousand here. What is your plan for it? And there are some who can describe a plan, and there's some who cannot.
But doesn't mean there's not a purpose, they just haven't articulated the purpose.
Well, that's the definition of a purpose.
I'm just saying, the philosophy is put everything in the big bucket.
It's just a piggy bank.
And just, just have line item tracking.
Yeah.
You live in the twenty-first century, we can track everything.
Speak for the FinCom, but there has been talks about using reserves to offset future tax impact, and they believe the best way to do that is to decrease the cost of the big capital that's coming.
By creating this fund.
By saving this money for that purpose.
So, it smoothes it out over the future. Yeah, it makes total sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so, not included in this figure, this three hundred thousand is whatever's left from the MFC articles, which would be somewhere between zero and two hundred thousand by the end of the year, closer to two hundred thousand and zero.
You mean, unspent?
Unspent. And the, the unspent bond proceeds that we've been discussing is about two hundred thousand. So, you have somewhere between zero and four hundred thousand that will be added to this.
That will go to this one.
That will go to free cash.
Oh, go to free cash.
So, this would be in excess of your reserve target, assuming.
Next year, you'd have another chance to.
So, that would make that number better.
Yes.
Higher, yeah, yes.
So, to answer your question, short term, two to three years, I do not see a problem funding our capital plan. And with some fiscal discipline, I think that extends five to ten years.
But.
It's a big ifs, though.
But if you were to, is this a town meeting vote to create this stabilization?
You already have it, you just have zero dollars in it.
Right, so do we, but you said, if we had to vote tomorrow, and we said we wanna put three hundred thousand into it, and we have a vote, then three hundred thousand goes in. If suddenly we liberate these other unspent funds, that would be a next year vote to put more of it in, right?
Correct. So, if, if everyone maths right, and everything falls into place, which never happens, you would generate somewhere between three to five hundred thousand, and then you'd have this two to four hundred thousand, and that would become your, your capital fund for next year.
I like it as you keep going along, you started at zero to four hundred, now you're at two to four hundred, let's keep talking.
Trying to be realistic, not undersell, but not oversell.
But the closeout of those unspent funds, you, you determine that the project is either over or never got done.
They are over.
And, so normally, anyway, that rolls into, doesn't it normally, anyway, roll back into the?
So, you'll love, you'll love statute, but by statute, if you appropriate for bonding purposes and don't spend it, you, the only way to do that is to un, to undo it, so you have to do it at town meeting. So, it's not like a capital article that you're done, and it just rolls into free cash, you have to, you have to physically do it, which is why the auditor said you should, and Kelly's been working on it.
So, you physically do it, but you don't necessarily have to, I think, I agree with, it's a good idea, but if you decided you had money for a building, and it's done, you don't have to put that surplus to another building. You could use it for something. Once you have that vote, you can do anything.
Kinda, you have to use it for debt, and it has to be of similar life.
You do have to use it for debt. Okay, all right. So, you can't go to free cash, right? Anyway, you couldn't, anyway.
You can, Cynthia's kind to me, launder it through the legal channels, which is to pay down long-term debt, which is completely legal.
Pay some other debt.
To councils, and then you'll see in the capital article, it'll say, "Appropriate from free cash X amount and a hundred and one thousand to be re-appropriated from unspent bonds," and that will wash into free cash.
Okay. What's the timing of the unlevering of, you know, the unwinding of those two to four hundred or zero to four hundred?
So, there is no time, but the auditor said it's very.
I mean, is it between now and town meeting or something?
You already did half of it, and then, in your last meeting, and then the, the big one, the hundred and one, has to be at town meeting, so it'll be at town meeting.
This is a lot of really good work.
We're just the backup singers.
Right.
That's true.
Great team effort.
It was a big, yeah, it was a really good team effort, for sure.
So, do we vote a fin, when do we vote a final budget, then?
Well, first of all, we're gonna invite some public input on this presentation.
Okay.
Where we discuss.
Before we, uh, discuss further. So, public input.
Jerry?
The public input over here online. John, did you have some questions you wanted to ask?
This is your chance.
This is, this is, yeah.
Me, me, John Lavery or some other John?
Yeah, the John Lavery.
I have three, um, but I'm not sure that, uh, they might be in the warrant as opposed to in this part. But I'll just, uh, I'll start off with the, a question about the, uh, police building. I, um, have been following that as best I can through what's published. And sat in on the last meeting, you guys have put a $3 million cap on the cost of that renovation. It's in the warrant at $3 million. Uh, but as I said in my note to you guys, sitting in on the meeting and just doing some simple math, it looks like they're roundly eight or $900,000 over that $3 million mark and they're just getting started.
Okay, well, we don't, we haven't had a presentation.
Respond to that or I should just go on and make the other two?
Yeah, John, we haven't had a presentation from that committee, so I'm, we're not going to, uh, comment on that. But thanks for that input. We'll certainly look into that.
Okay, are they presenting, are they presenting tonight?
No.
Oh, okay, that, yeah, I didn't know, uh, because there's no budget numbers available. Um, it is in their, in their charge to update you, um, as soon as possible.
Right.
When they start running into cost overruns.
Right.
So I'm, I, just letting you know.
Next.
Uh, I wanted to raise that flag as early as possible. Should I go on to the other two or?
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else is there.
Nathan had a prob, uh, question.
Yeah, so when, when would they be presenting to us? Because if, if they're, if, in my opinion, if they're going over 3 million and they're, or if they're at 3 million, they're changing the nature of what was already in it, that's a hard stop for me as, because that was very clear direction. You know, so it, it would be a real shame if, if it's so close to town meeting that we, we couldn't do anything or we had to spend more money in order to get what we wanted, in order to get it by town meeting. So I think if they're varying from the 3 million, um, we should know that right away.
I think we need to invite them soon to find that out or unless you have some.
Aren't they given pretty clear instructions?
So they, they have not projected that this is over 3 million. This is John's math, which John is good at math. But, um, they, they have not identified 800,000 more in new costs. This is not a thing.
We kind of set them up so you have to make trades to stay in.
Right.
But you have to stay in the cap.
Yeah.
And you can't make trades that substantially alter what we're expecting.
Right.
From the $3 million, right?
Right.
It's not like they could say, well, we're not going to have a sell, right? Okay.
So we should just put that on for an up, an update soon.
Yeah. Okay. All right. The other two issues, John. What did you have for us?
Uh, for the fire department, I, I, uh, when I first read that article, I thought the decision on a new fire engine was three years off because that swimmer gonna get it, um, if we order it now. And so I, I thought we had time to discuss that, but it's not really, right? You're gonna have to make that decision now. And it's kind of caught up also in the police station renovation and, I mean, sorry, the fire station renovation and what we want from our fire department as a whole. So, uh-oh, running out of, I'm running out of juice. So I did talk to Brian at length. He was great in responding to my questions. And where I've come down on this request for the, uh, new engine is, yeah, I'm a supporter. Um, we need it and we're not going to save any money and it might even cost us more if we wait on ordering it.
Oh, so that's a change from your memo?
Yeah. That, that leaves a lot of discussion open on, uh, the police station, I mean, the fire station building remodel and the charge, if you will, for the fire department as a whole. Some of that I included in my note in the questions and a lot of that Brian has responded to.
And we do have that on our agenda for a couple of weeks from now.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. The reviewers, the silk for the fire department.
Yeah.
Okay. Was that two and three?
The last one is the bog house.
The bog house.
I can't get off that easy, German.
Do I go, are you ready for that one too?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I can't hear you. Alright, I was just gonna go ahead. You cut me off. Uh, so I first brought this to your attention a year ago, almost to today, in roughly the same kind of meeting where I just, in the public comments section, I said, "We have a problem here and we really need to get our hands around it and, um, uh, solve it." And the problem being the legal issues at the, at the Cranbury Bog, specifically the bog house. So some things happened, but that was never resolved. And, you know, I just, I, I worked through a lot of records for the bog house. It's really clear to me there are as many regulations violated there by having it occupied as there are regulatory bodies in town. They've broken them all. And on top of that, uh, as Ryan has pointed out several times now, it's in violation of the conservation law in Massachusetts to have anybody living in that building. And he got that from town council. And so now you have Ryan and me, mainly me shouting it. You know, it's illegal to have people living in that building. I don't really care what happens five years in it. I don't care what the five-year plan is or the 10-year plan or the two-year plan. You have a legal problem right now. And I think the only question you should be asking is, how do we fix that? You shouldn't be talking about funding. You shouldn't be talking about doing more repairs. You shouldn't be talking about any of that stuff. You should be talking how to fix a legal problem. And I shouldn't have to say anything more on that topic. And I'm not tonight, except Mr. Modell, I'm gonna make you a promise. I'm not gonna come back before the select board unless I'm invited or someone tells me I need to, to talk about the bog house again. This is it. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other input? Okay. So we still have some more things on this agenda item. We have, uh, reviewing of the ballot questions, unless, and the warrant.
Uh, and some budget. So the, um, David asked, when do we approve the budget? So the remaining questions are, is 3.11% close enough to target to approve? Uh, the FinCom did, I won't speak for them, was it right there, but did say that that's close enough for them. So that's a question.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So is the 3.11 includes the effect of the reduction of benefits that the school takes from its pot and these other little pots? It's all in that? So 3.11 is a real all-in number then?
Yes. It's an, it's an estimate, as I've caveated a few times, but that is our best estimate.
Yep.
Based on this year's tax rate.
Yep.
And does it include any unknowns about, that we may still have about health insurance?
It does not.
Ah, the 1% thing, right, really?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it does include some, some other items on this list that, that could change it. So, uh, we talked about the high school. We talked about Board of Health. We talked about Council on Aging. Um, just to make sure that, that you understand the 55,000 that's in the long-term debt, we're recommending that that transfers to the maintenance line in order to fund, um, one-time things. So admin support, which is currently funded by the MFC warrant article, and then a backstop for any of the MFC articles in large capital. So it's in the budget. It's being held so that we can continue to borrow at the rate we're borrowing and plan. But there is no dedicated borrow for that 55,000 this year. I am recommending that if you cut it, it'll go away forever and you won't get it back. So instead of cutting it, move it to solve capital issues for one year until the borrowing for the fire truck or other items begin and then you can roll it back in that way. I know it's a little bit of a shell game, but.
So what does that mean for the fiscal '25?
It means nothing, except I want you to know about it.
Being transparent.
Well, okay, but I still don't understand. So we're not spending it?
You will be, but for one-time things.
So it's not going to increase our base?
It's not.
You promise?
I'm just kidding.
Kinda.
And, and the gap is, so the gap, if we really wanted to get to a number that starts with a 2, the gap is 30K-ish, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the health insurance 1% is 14K. That's in. And the COLA, that's 2.25 is in.
In.
Okay, so then, uh, there's a health insurance conversation and a COLA conversation. So I would like to show you something that was requested of me.
So I, while you're doing that, so what's currently in the budget is a 1% increase in the employer contribution, but only for existing employees, not the retirees. They have already been taken out of this?
No, we just have straight 1%.
Oh, okay. All right.
So this is the, um, presentation about health insurance.
Yeah.
It's an eye chart, but I can try to make it bigger. Alright, so we have 188 employees on the town's health insurance, 100 active and 88 retirees. Of those retirees, 73 are Medicare. So this is of, as of December. So these numbers change every month. So I just, I picked a point in time that I had available today. I can get you, Mark.
That's good.
Uh, of those, 88, 73 were Medicare eligible, which means they pay for Medicare and we pay much less for them. 16, or 15 of them are active retirees, meaning they are still on, they're early retirees who are not eligible yet for Medicare, but will be eventually. Uh, so most of those folks are, are close to Medicare age and we're carrying them under the active insurance and we have to by law. So for the Medicare retirees, so these are the straight retirees, the 73 that are Medicare eligible, we pay 26,000 monthly and 315,000 annually, which is split between the employee and the town. So the town pays 179,000 of that and the employees pick up 135,000 of it.
That's the 57 or 56?
This is a 57% split.
57%.
This year's numbers, not next year's numbers. So this isn't exact.
Okay, yeah, okay. Got it. But I still want to.
So 1% increase, cut or whatever, is around $1,800 for that class of employee.
The aggregate, all total.
Aggregate, yep.
So it would increase the town's cost.
By 1,800.
By $1,800.
Plus the 9% increase, but I don't want to get too.
Yeah.
It's around 1,800.
Okay.
The active retirees, so these are folks that are not Medicare eligible, uh, same exercise, 1% is around 14, or 1,500.
It's only 15 people, so it's 100.
Yes.
100 of person.
It's a much more expensive, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And then our active employees are obviously the biggest hit in terms of, we care about them, but at their cost. So 1% is around 10,000.
Okay, that's how you got your 14K in your memo.
Yes.
Okay.
18, then.
Yeah, it's about 14K. Okay.
Yeah.
So this is, if you went up 1% and everybody went up 1% to 57, what has been discussed here and, and recommended is, do you want to continue to, to bring retirees with, with you? We are recommending that it would be a pretty big life hit to an active retiree. I'm calling them active retirees to differentiate, but those are the medic, non-Medicare eligible. Pretty active hit to them to, to bring them down or to not carry them. Uh, for the retirees, it is, it is still a hit, but it is less because most of their.
We're not saying not carry them. We're just saying not keep moving the.
You don't get the increased share or the reduction in their share.
So by statute, you have to be 50/50 with everybody because of what you passed. You do not have to continue everybody the same.
Yeah, right.
So if you dropped retirees to 55 and had actives at 57, you would save around $3,800.
But I mean, it's, our goal is to get to 60/40, right, for the actives?
Yes.
So we have to look at this in the context of a multi-year plan. Are we gonna begin separating those that did their service, we're capping them out at 57/43 or whatever and that's that? It's not just a this-year decision.
Well. No, I think, well, we're talking about capping maybe just the Medicare retiree.
The Medicare and the active pre-Medicare.
Well, you can do them separately.
Separate them out.
You can do any, yeah, you can do any of those.
And the, the Medicare and, um, Lynn was on the committee with, they're very pleased and we're not really particularly pushing, um, for that, but they're, because their policy covers everything. They don't have deductibles. They don't have any.
So we don't need to, we don't need to.
So we don't.
Be generous there.
Well, yeah. It's not as big a hit for them.
But you say hit like we're taking something away. We're actually.
Improving.
We're improving or declining to improve.
Right, right.
They would stay even or.
I can see, again.
Right.
My understanding broadly is.
Yeah.
As a retention tool.
Yes.
And to stay on par with other towns in a competitive employment situation, we decided a year or two ago that we would try to be better and get to 60/40 and we didn't want to do it all in one fell swoop. So we said, "Let's staircase it up." So that's great. We all bought into that. Not to be, I don't want to be harsh about it, but retention is not an issue with your retirees, right? They're retired. So we have a plan and if it's generous enough, it's generous enough. We're not taking anything away.
Right, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Sweetening.
What I meant was, yeah.
So a lever you could pull that I'm not suggesting, which is why I'm saying increase or decreases, you could bring retirees or anybody down to 50.
Well, that would be a true takeaway.
Right.
I'm not hearing that.
It would save $14,000, which is a year.
Well, you could actually give it to the active members and give them 2% instead of 1% if you were to do that. Well.
Anyway, I guess my feeling is we should cap off the retirees and continue on the staircase.
Right where they are now.
Yeah, and continue on the staircase.
What'd you say, Nathan?
I don't think we take things away.
No, we shouldn't take things away.
We can stop giving them more, but.
Right, yeah. Anyway, that would be my recommendation, is begin the bifurcation. Don't get fooled by 1,800 and 1,400 because it'll be a few more years of that.
It adds up.
Just say, okay, we've done that part and now current guys. Now the question then becomes, when current folks move into the retiree folks, do they carry their 60/40 or do they drop back down to the retiree?
Yeah, what would happen?
They would go to the retiree split.
Yeah, 57, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it is what it is, you know?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So they would just need to know now, right?
They need to.
That's gonna happen, right?
Right.
Because then that's planning, it's.
And it also might impact somebody's decision about whether to retire before they're Medicare eligible.
Right.
They might decide to stay in longer.
Yeah.
Depending on the cost to them, yeah. But knowing ahead of time, yeah, that's the key part.
Because right now they're planning on, what, 56%? Is that what it is now?
That's what they get to.
It is 56, yes.
Right now they're planning on 56. So if it's 56 when they retire, that's what they've been planning on.
Right.
Right. Okay, so are we gonna make this decision tonight? I mean, are you, do you feel ready to make the decision tonight?
Yep.
That would be great. Excellent. So the, what I'm hearing is the proposal would be to cap the retirees at 56/40, which is where they are today.
44.
Sorry, it's 56/44, thank you. And to continue with a 1% increase to 57/45. 43, the other direction, um, for our active employees. With no differentiation among the retirees between the over and under 65. Okay. Just want to be, okay. Can I have that motion?
Meaning that somebody who's getting 57 this year, if they retire next year, it's going to 56.
That's correct as well.
Yep.
Well, year after next, because this year they're getting 56.
But they're different. They're now longer active. They're retiring.
Right, right. So next year they'll get 57 as an active and then the year after that, if they.
They'd go back to 56.
They would go back to 56. Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So do I have a motion? All right. So do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You have your decision.
Okay, so keep the budget as, at the 3.11%?
Well, you.
We just reduced it a little. We just reduced it.
We reduced it by a smidgen because you don't have.
5,000.
Fourth 5,000, right.
Four or 5,000.
I guess I want to go back to the 3.11 discussion. I mean, there is signaling value in finding that extra, now 25K or 26K, and getting to 2.99. In terms of the person, an individual's tax bill, it's kind of in the noise, right? But it's a, it's a signaling that we're trying very hard to get. Now, again, and I'm not saying it to push it. I just, is there psychological benefit to 2.99 versus 3.11? Sufficient that we go scrub and wire brush ourselves?
So everything we've done so far is supposed to not have an impact on services, correct? So if we were to try and find more, is the argument that we are going to lose services to the town?
Possibly.
No. Can I, can I comment?
Yeah.
No, I mean, you could just take 30K more out of free cash.
You could do that.
We have, we have it. We just.
We don't want to spend it because we want to.
We wanted to put 30K less into the reserve fund.
Right.
Right, we want to get.
You know.
It's not a bad idea.
I don't think the 2.9, of course, the 2.99 is the operate, the effect of.
That's the operating.
There's still the other pieces.
There will be the other pieces, but at least. Like I say, I agree with you.
You're not really doing it. You're just, you're just taking money you already have. We're not cutting.
Well, no, but I mean, listen, we live this world.
But it comes less to the taxpayer.
The tax rate.
Currently, but we're not building up what we're talking about.
No, correct.
So we're just, you know, kicking the can.
To track this point a little bit, we pulled that lever in the public here, I think.
Yeah.
And I, we had a discussion earlier about using free cash and having more be a lever.
Oh, you need a microphone.
More be a lever for kind of emergency times as opposed to just optics towards the budget.
Right. No, I don't disagree. I was, I wasn't really thinking of using free cash. I was thinking of actually finding 30K of cuts. But it's, we, we live in this little ecosystem. A lot of us have been in this ecosystem for a lot of years, right? So we're pretty facile with what we just talked about. Most people have no idea, right? I'm just saying, when you present a budget at town meeting and the operating budget is under three, it sends a message. Now, who pays attention? I don't know. Most people actually, since we're the kind of town we are, they probably look at their tax bills and say, well, geez.
I think you're confusing the operating budget being under three or the tax rate.
It will not be, that will not be under three.
So this was the tax bill. The 3.11 is tax bill, right?
No, I think it's the other way. It's the average tax bill.
Average tax bill.
Wow.
So.
For the, to support the operating.
Support the, yes.
It's not the total.
No, but their total tax doesn't break out all the other stuff, right?
Right, this is just to support the operating budget.
The portion of the operating budget towards the tax bill.
I think that that's, that's where I have a problem with this, right? It's like 3.11, okay, but what's the actual number?
Right.
If we look at the warrant articles and everything, what is the, I don't think we could decide 3.11 is fine.
Won't make a difference.
Until we look at the impact of this operating.
Let me, you may make a valid point, but the town, the town themselves will choose to fund those. Those are different.
Right.
The operating budget, we create.
Right.
And we present to the town with due diligence. We, we scrub everything to save you money.
Right.
Your choice if you want to spend money for X, Y, and Z. You're going to vote on it. You don't want it? You don't get it.
Yeah, I understand that. I think.
It's different.
Though what, what we could probably do better, and I know we do it a little bit, is just in each warrant article, say, this is what the impact on your tax bill is, right? This is, this is going to cost the average taxpayer $50 more a year. Or, you know, it's like, because they're making that decision in a vacuum right now because they're thinking 3.11. They may not even understand that that's actually additional that they're voting for. And so we should be very clear in each warrant article, you know, you voted, this is three, or in each town meeting, you have already voted 3.11% tax increase. If you vote this one, it's going to be this much additional. If you vote this one, it's going to be this much additional. So that they have the knowledge they need as to what the impact is going to be on them.
So.
So none of the articles here do that. So the, an example of where that was true is the MFC article from a couple of years ago. You raise and appropriated taxes, $750,000 for the MFC article. So that directly impacted taxes. For the capital, the way that it's being recommended here, and we talked about it on FinCom, it's using your town reserves in order to fund it. So the capital article did have an impact on taxes. You generated free cash, and now you're essentially using it to give it back without increasing the taxes. You could give it back to just lower the tax rate, and there's other ways to give it back, but you're doing it for, for capital. The only articles where there would be a budgetary impact are the fire truck, which would, which we are creating that 55,000 in space in order to fund. So that's kind of neutral. And then the police department is a straight debt exclusion. It's a, that's a direct tax.
Those are the ones, I think, that deserve the Nathan treatment.
Yeah, then they should.
But that almost makes it seem like, you know, if, if, it doesn't make it free, right? It almost makes it seem like, well, why wouldn't I vote for the warrant article because it's not going to cost me anything? I think still having like a cost might be.
It's pretty complicated to explain what's really going on. And the two issues, I have three issues, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I just want to give you my three issues. Issue one is if you start that process, once you start it, you probably have to do it all the time. And now you get a whole nother layer of people saying, whoa, wait a minute. Maybe it's not worth 50 bucks a year. I don't want that. You know, you're gonna, it may be the right thing, and I like this true democracy, but you're going to take people who parachute in after not having any background other than what they got that day, and they're just going to focus on that, and it's going to be kind of a different dialogue. The second thing is I'm looking at like the warrant article for capital. We put the 650,000 or whatever as a chunk. Now, we could say that 650,000 represents, you know, $85 on your tax bill or whatever, but it's like 12 items. Do we now get into, well, how much is this one? How much is this one? You know, each single line item. And then the third one is this, my third concern is the very complicated, to really be accurate, it's a fairly complicated discussion.
Right, but I guess, I guess what Brian just said, maybe I misunderstood what was being said. It sounds to me like the answer is yes, 3.11 is the increase, including the warrant articles.
Except for the police station.
Except for the police.
And the fire truck.
What about the GIS warrant article and the Cradenbury Bog and the Boghouse warrant articles?
As constructed currently, it's all coming from free cash or excess above 12%.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess I.
That has already been taxed. That was already taxed and appropriated, and you're holding it. So the idea is that you have a plan for that extra or you give it back.
Right.
So then the question really is, is 3.11, that's how much it's going to cost of the police station and the fire truck? Is that an okay increase?
So the fire truck, I'm sorry to be so, I'm a nerd. So the fire truck is built into the operating budget as long as you hold that debt capacity. So I know it sounds like a shell game, but that is a placeholder for the fire truck. So there is.
But if not a fire truck, that placeholder would be there for something else, right?
Or other.
If you're on a collision course, as your charts have suggested, that some future date, when Mr. Modell is no longer select board member, hopefully, we run out of ceiling and then those trades make a difference, right?
Yes.
So that, you know.
So Scott Triola last year summed it up better than I ever did. He said, if you don't have a plan for this excess, then you should give it back.
Right.
So another, this is like a total theoretical, but you could, you could have nothing, cost anything this year, and give all the free cash back and have no reserves, which is, no one would ever say you should do that. And then you could start taxing people for each particular item.
Right.
Or you can create a capital plan with a funding mechanism and build trust that that's the best way to use the taxpayer dollars. But I've said for a while now, if you're above 12%, you should have a plan for it because that's too much to hold and tax people.
Okay, so other than the $3 million, only $3 million police station.
Right.
So that is truly.
Everything's included in 3.11.
That's a debt exclusion. It's a, you're going to tax above 2.5.
No, but it's going to be more in the tax. I think what Nathan's saying is correct, right? It's going to be, if we pass it, it will be at some year reflected in an increase in the tax bill above the 3.11 or something.
I'm getting uncomfortable with this 3.11 because there's an error bar on that, and it is plus or minus. It's 3.11 plus or minus probably .22. So, you know, it's.
Because of revenue?
Because they're estimates?
So it's built off of, this is going to drive you guys bananas.
No, it is. No, that's not true.
Yes, it's average tax bill.
I know, but I'm saying that's an average, but the dollar figure it represents has not got an error bar.
Just let me show you how it's built. So the, Brian built me this tax rate tool. So we're calculating the average tax bill based off of the FY '24 tax rate. A lot goes into a tax rate, so the new growth rate plus any shifts in assessment will actually calculate the average tax bill. So what we're trying to do is estimate what this budget decision is going to do to the average tax bill as it exists today. But if all the variables come in the way they did this year, this budget would actually come in at like 2.97, right? So it's within the average range. It could go the other way, too.
So let, maybe, let me ask a different thing. If you were just to align the operating budget year over year compared with last year, what's the, what's the math increase of that?
3.07.
3.07?
Yes.
Okay, that, I mean, I'm actually, I kind of agree with you, Kay. I'm less comfortable with the average tax bill than I am with, hey, we can't, the average is like, you have a big house, you have a little house, you have a deck house. I don't know. But year over year, budget A to B, we kept it under three. I would say, that's a good thing to say. Like, we kept it under three. And to Mark's point, or maybe it was, I think it was, this is what we worked hard to do, and then these other choices are there for you.
Yes.
Without getting too detailed, that's a simple message I think people could relate to. So .07.
That's really in the noise.
Why don't we drive it out? Find it and drive it out of there.
Oh, .07?
Yeah.
Aye, aye, aye.
Well, we're already below, because we just saved 5,000, right?
Yeah, we already saved five. So it's not much. Just find it somewhere and take it out of somebody's budget.
We just, as he said, we just did. We just did.
The regional school.
With the health. Sure, that was 5K, right there.
Well, that's 5K, but that's not an, I don't know.
We're going to cut your salary.
Take it out of that big select board budget, right?
So this is not, not to like suck up to Lynn, but this is Lynn's point, is everybody's cut except for the, for the regional school.
Yeah.
So $8 million of our budget.
Listen, if you can go to battle this week and get it, how much do you need now?
$25,000. That's what you're going for. $25,000.
All right, so go.
That's what we're going for, so.
All right.
What does that work out to be as a percentage of their budget? So the $25,000 is one.
It's like coffee. It's like what they spend at Starbucks.
We cut about 100 and, what is it, 150,000?
No, it's 100.
No, from the whole budget for us to get 25,000.
100.
100.
100, because we're like 30.
Yeah, 25%.
Yeah. But you don't actually need, well, we shouldn't say that. If they're listening, we need it.
We need it.
But the fact is, now we're down to.
We do need it.
But anyway, my point, my point is, it's a nice, again, they won't care. We say 3.07, it probably won't matter. But it's a good strong message, like we're working hard to, we hear you. I mean, the, one of the, I don't know if it's common, but a complaint is, we don't take it seriously enough, right? We're happy to pass along tax increases, and that's not true. We work pretty hard to not do that.
Considering we started even much higher.
Yeah, much higher.
And we said, no, we really want 3%.
Okay. So I'm happy. I'm okay.
Okay.
But fact.
Glad we got that out of the way.
You were just saying you weren't.
Well, because he, he was talking about the 3.1.
I'd like to see if we could.
It's spurious.
I'd love the 2.99, but if.
For the budget.
For the budget.
For the budget.
Just not get into the average tax bill and.
Yeah, the average tax bill is a spurious number.
In the budget, 2024 versus 2025, the delta is three, right? I like that. And if it's 3.07, it's, it's fine, but it's just not quite as.
Okay, but you cannot, and by the way, that is not a problem you can solve with free cash.
No.
That is a real cut in service.
It's not a shell game. It's just, we just did this.
Or you could take, I've seen quite a few things come here that are essentially multi-year. You're doing things like, this is fun, we're funding this for three years. Okay, so fund it the first year a little, .07% less.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I mean, the GIS comes to mind.
Yeah, but that's.
We're kind of asking for money for multiple years.
But that's not in, that's not in the operating budget, you see.
Wow, okay.
Well, what it would mean is we're really not doing the 6,200 for the compost.
Yeah. Well.
That's, that's a huge part of that number, 6,200.
Well, we're not, that's not in the budget, 6,200.
That's what I'm saying. It's, we're clearly not doing that.
Right, we're not doing that.
Or other things like that.
They're funding themselves, right?
Yeah, right.
Anyway, I think we.
Okay.
Have we beaten this to death yet?
I think so, yeah, we've beaten it.
An hour ago.
Do we need to do the COLA conversation? That's the next one.
Yeah, we should do.
On Brian's list.
Wait, I just want to be sure that any decisions that needed to be made weren't just, have been, that were clear on what the decision was. So the decision that we needed to make was, is the 3.11, as it has now shaken out because of, we have a 3.08 budget increase.
Right.
Is that acceptable to us? Can we live with that? Yeah. And I'm going to.
Yes, although we very much like to see the.
If we could shake a little out, I'd be happy, but.
Well, that's, but that's not in our control, unfortunately. The school is not under control, so.
When do we have to finally make any final tweak?
Well.
Can I wait till we have a school discussion so we know if they went anywhere with it?
Well, okay.
We could. I mean, that's coming up. If, I haven't gotten the confirmation, but if it comes up on Tuesday, we've got our public hearing set for 17, so we're starting to really bump up against it. So that would mean you would, you would get together.
Are we meeting next week again?
Yes, we are.
Not on the budget.
But not on the budget. But we could, we could.
We'd have a meeting two, the following Tuesday, though. Two weeks from tonight would be our next meeting.
The ninth. The ninth.
Yeah.
It's not that it's not doable. We'd just be cutting it close because we've got to put our presentation together through the public hearing. We haven't said that in stone. We could push it out.
So the question, I guess, so the question on the table is, do we want to cut our services in order to get to the 3%?
You are here, maybe Ryan and FinCom is here to represent that even a dollar less than this is a service cut. I mean, that's what I'm hearing, but I don't believe it.
I don't even think we need to go there. I mean, I think.
I, I think that there's, so you could cut your legal budget? You could cut?
Yeah, just make an assumption of something, and you cut it by 5K and you're done.
You are.
If you run over, you, we know we handle that, right? The truth is, we run a surplus of, we're conservative enough that we run a surplus of free cash every year. And so at budget transfer time, if somebody's over, we move money in, and we still generally run it. We're talking about, I think, less than 10K.
10K, it's 25K.
No, it's not. It was 25K. When it was 3.11, it was 25K.
30K when it was 25K.
But then we took off retirees. I don't know. I mean, you could do the math, but I'm just.
It's 25/5 to get to 2.99.
It's okay, whatever. All right.
Well, you know, again, not to go too long on this, but your comment about our legal budget, that's not a bad place to look at. Just one example, which I had no idea was the case until just recently, that, you know, we're with the, we're members of the Community Preservation Coalition. And while they don't have lawyers on staff, they have years and years and years of experience of working with communities around all these questions that come up about grant applications. We didn't consult them at all in this process, this last six months. I didn't know that existed. Nobody, we, it kind of fell off the radar screen when Luke, you know, stepped down. I didn't even know, nobody knew we were members of this coalition. I don't know how much we spent on legal fees this year, talking to council about all the different questions we had about CPC issues. I don't know what the savings would be, but I do think we will spend less on legal counsel next year for advice around CPA questions, because we'll be able to go to this coalition first. We pay a membership of, I think it's $2,000, so that's in, that's already in the budget. But we don't pay anything in addition.
How's it better, we get rid of that and pay for that?
I think, I think we've gone through this process, you know, this is my opinion, we've gone through this process. A lot of really, really smart people put a lot of effort into this. We set the bar at 3%. It's now right around 3.1%. It's $25,000. I don't, I think, let's just move on. I think we hit it, $25,000 over is great, if we can save it. I would be, so, saying some, you know, it's, it's like, that $25,000 we've spent on things that have come up throughout the year that we could just be more diligent at not doing. And, you know, I think we're spending a lot of time on $25,000 to cut from the budget to get to a 2.99 number. And we could just be so much better throughout the year, I think. That's my thought.
But we are, we actually are, again, we generate a free cash surplus almost every single year, which means we are better. We underspend, what we, what we lose is the signaling value. We won't get that back. They won't remember that we were diligent during the year. I'm looking at OPEB, we have 215. Why not 200,000? Like, what's the magic of 215? It's just this-
But that's cutting another goal that we sent, right? I mean, throughout the year, we can, you know, what, what happens is throughout the year, we give money to a department because they come in, they say something, and that gets baked into the budget that we are now dealing with this year.
We should be better, I agree with you.
We have to be better at that. I'm certain we've done $25,000 worth of that, we just did-
No, you're right, you're right. But on the other side of the ledger, we've underspent things we have in the, I guarantee, I would bet you a drink at your favorite establishment next year that there'll be things in this budget that we approve that we will not spend, that we will not spend.
Right.
And it will be a substantial amount, right?
But that's, that's gonna impact all those other formulas and numbers that we were presenting.
I've said enough. I'm happy to go along with 3.1. I, I think we miss a little opportunity, but that's fine.
All right.
But I think it's a compelling point to raise to the Concord High School. They need to put some skin in the game.
Right.
So, that's the message, and everybody's welcome to join us on Tuesday to-
And I have, I did send that message to our two Carlisle representatives to this, to the-
Regional school.
Regional school board, that, school, that everybody in this town, in every department went, took their budgets down to 3%.
Right.
And the only-
What is their year over year, region?
The region is 3.89, I think.
Without debt, it's 3.57, I believe.
Was it?
Without debt.
Because that 100, when they took that?
With debt, it's like in the twos.
Yeah.
Sorry, which is, what is, you mean our portion?
No.
No.
I'm talking about their, their increase, so.
Oh, sorry.
How it- Three schools.
Yeah.
Because their debt's going down, because they're-
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have to do this before debt. So, what I, what I asked the school committee members was to ask the administration to look at reducing their budget. You know, what would they need to reduce to get it to 3% overall from year to year without debt?
Yeah.
3.08, is that what you got?
No, 3.8.
That's what I heard, I thought it was 3.8. Yeah.
Okay.
And it's 3.8 of a lot of money.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So, we will do our best.
So-
Thank you.
We're-
We're good, thank you for the-
We're good, we're done.
Leave it.
We're, we're leaving it, right? Everybody? Yeah, hands up?
We're leaving, hoping for a miracle.
Okay, good. All right.
COLA.
COLA. Well, I, I'm just gonna launch right out.
Good for you, Kate.
Yeah. I think the 2.25 is a good number. Our unions, when we bargained with, with the police union anyway, accepted a townwide COLA but with a floor of 2.25. The school, CPS, CPS school, their last contract, in fact, they are the ones that suggested, why, why are we spending all this time talking about a quarter of a percent, you know, and beating it to death? Why don't we just do a town, you know, go on with the townwide COLA? And we, I thought it was a good idea. Victor was on the negotiating team, he thought it was a good idea, but then he got replaced by Jim. Anyway, it was kind of in between negotiators and it, we didn't have, we didn't settle that. But Victor and I then brought that idea to the police, and we kind of-
So, that's the way we wanna move things along?
And that's how we'd like to move things along. So, I would not like to give our employees less than 2.25.
I agree. So, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
So, but I just wanna clarify who an employee is.
A non-bargaining unit.
Non-barg, yes.
Okay, so it's not all employees? So, what, yeah.
Well, no, because the teachers, first of all, are not our employees.
Well, they are.
Well, they are, but you know-
The police are, right, in the-
So, police are, a union, dispatcher, union, everyone else is non-union except, and then the school is a whole different.
Right.
Yeah.
So, all non-union employees would get 2.25%?
Yeah.
So, everyone on the wage scale in the warrant?
And this is in the budget? And this is part of our employee retention, you know, going forward? Like, is this the reason we have that as a 2.25?
Why is it 2.25?
Yeah, well, I mean-
To match the floor contracts and other similarly situated, the, the schools, all the employees in the schools are at 2 this year, so.
This is a year after several 2.25s, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, as Kate points out, it's sort of an artifact of prior negotiations, let's say.
Yeah, and going forward, we probably have to do some other things, but we don't wanna talk about that now.
I don't think we wanna say, though, I mean, so you were saying that your discussion here was that last year it was 2.25 and the year before it was 2.25? I don't remember.
For the school?
No, for employees.
Last year was three, but we didn't have the step that was introduced last year.
Okay.
The year before, I wasn't here, but I can look it up.
Okay, all right. And I misheard, I misheard, so, I'll shut up. The point is to standardize it across.
Yeah, right, I think so, right. And in the long run, I think, I like that where all the employees, bargaining unit, or all the bargaining units agree to this deal like the, like, we go with the town, we go with what the town goes.
Yeah, I mean, for too long, we've been, I feel, balancing our budgets on the backs of the non-bargaining employees, and I don't think that's fair.
I wouldn't go that far, but I would say, we try, we should strive to treat the non-bargaining unit employees as if they were in a bargaining unit.
Yes.
That's why I asked about, is it a retention thing? Because we've talked a lot about that, how difficult it is to get employees.
I'd say it's inequity with a small e, personally, because I think, I mean, I, we felt this very acutely at the school side. You know, you have a custodian who's working hard at a lower wage perhaps, but he's working just as hard as a teacher who has the benefit of a bargaining unit, you know, fair's fair, right? I mean, they should get the same rate of increase as if they had bargained for it. That's kind of an equity issue, in my opinion. And I would say the same here, town next to the police or whatever. So, I support the 2.25.
Yeah. Again, I just, I thought that this had a relation to, you know, we, Brian has brought up, one of our biggest challenges is attracting employees.
Yeah, right.
And so, having this in place is one of the mechanisms in which we can, you know, retain, attract and retain employees. And we're trying to do that in a thoughtful way going forward.
Right.
So, I'm asking, is this a part of that, or is it not? Is it just?
Yes and no. I'd say, again, if somebody's, say, deciding between Carlisle and Westford and says, well, Westford has 2.5 or 3% for the last four years, we're not trying to, in my opinion, we're not trying to be com- Like, if you look at the healthcare split discussion we just had, that is a competitive landscape where they absolutely look at what the other towns match. I can't speak to what the other towns do for COLA, and I'm, again, personally, just speaking for me, not actually that interested in what the other, I mean, somewhat, but not really trying to match what other towns do for COLA. I'm much more concerned about the internal Carlisle equity, where all employees are working hard. Some are lucky enough, let's say, or have the benefit of a bargaining unit, others don't, but they shouldn't be treated less fairly because they're not part of a bargaining unit.
Yeah.
So, by saying 2.25, then everybody who works for Carlisle except for the school union employees will be getting 2.25?
Yeah.
And non-union.
Well, and they're non-union.
The school takes the same thing that the-
They'll treat their non-union as their teachers are treated.
Oh, the teacher, okay.
So, they've budgeted for everyone to have the same in the schools?
So, they will all get whatever their contract says?
Yeah.
But in, there have been years where they would have gotten a higher percentage than the town, so that sort of evens out. That, that's okay with, and in the long run, if we can move to the Kate system, that also goes away. Then everybody will be on the same.
But we're, I think, we're on the Kate system for everything but the schools, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah.
And the schools are gonna get 2?
I think that's true. But don't forget, they get pretty generous steps.
Yeah.
Many of them.
But then we also now have a, we have our own-
It's not as generous as-
No, it's not as generous, but right, we now have, based on what we passed at town meeting a year ago.
Right.
We have a new wage structure as well, that allows for a merit increase.
Just wanna make sure I understand exactly what the question is. The question is, is 2.5 what we wanna give, or is it 2.25?
2.25.
I mean, 2.25?
Yes.
What, is, is that what we wanna give, or do we wanna give less, or do we wanna give more?
No, it's-
I just wanna know.
You have to set it.
Right.
Right now, in the budget, it's 2.25.
It's 2.25.
I need your approval.
And I'm in favor of that.
2?
What are you looking at, Travis?
I was just curious, on the finance committee, I mean, if you had weighed in on that at all, as far as, you put it at 2.25, obviously, so.
I mean, my feeling is, I mean, I'm aligned with Kate's philosophy, and that's why I felt it was also fair. And David brings up a good point, it's really an equity issue, too. And it's been something that, from year to year, has really been a struggle. And I think with, so it's been kind of a multi-pronged effort, meaning with Ryan putting in these, these step increases, I think really brings people more into parity, and bringing the health insurance up a little bit, and then having that equity of the COLAs kind of all falling together, really, I think, rounds this out very nicely. It makes us attractive, and for good or bad, I mean, one of the reasons why we're struggling with some of these increases is we have seen about a significant amount of people coming onto healthcare. Now, some of those are new workers, but again, we are attracting the right people, and that's, again, this is my opinion. You know, I'd like you guys to weigh in if you feel different. So, that was not irrational, but that helps.
Okay.
Yeah, I follow what you're pointing to.
Yep, okay. All right, you're good to go with 2.25.
All right. The warrant. A lot of this has been covered already, so. Consent agenda, town reports, salaries of elected officials, so the town clerk's salary is tied to the wage scale now. So, all the decisions that were made will equal out to that number in a way that I can explain at town meeting if asked. The actuarial study of OPEB is one of the warrant articles listed, part of the free cash usage that was discussed. Allowing real estate tax exemptions is something you've already approved. Allowing us to spend Chapter 90 is something I think you continue to approve. PEG, this is the use of the Comcast funds in order to provide the service that people are watching on now and other capital investments. Article eight, this is where you would have your discussion about either authorizing a new, subtracting a revolving fund, or you do set annually the limits here, so there will be a chart in the motions. This is how much can be spent from those revolving funds.
Maybe what we need is be, how much can be kept in each refi, you know?
Yeah, that's not statutory, that's local, so.
Okay, got it, okay.
Okay, article nine, we just discussed, so this would be updated to, it is updated here to include 2.25, make sure that's accurate. And then the classifications. So, we have made some in-season changes, but they've all been communicated to you, so this is a known chart. One example, part-time police officers were not on the chart, we did add them, they are non-union employees.
That's the police assistant? Is that what it's called? No, I see above it, oh, below it, I, grade five, okay.
So, we have three types of part-time officers, which should go away in the next five years as post comes in and takes away certain requirements for part-time officers. Deputy chief, right, that decision was made this year, so that was added. Operating budget, we spent a lot of time on that, that'll show up here.
Can we go through that again?
The capital equipment article is here with all of its components. The MFC article will be here. We can add detail as required or asked during the motions. The fire engine borrow, so this would be to authorize that borrowing, and then eventually it would become part of the operating budget. Revoking the opioid settlement stabilization fund and creating a special revenue fund is a special gift from the state. We have to do that. This is in here as a placeholder, in case you wanna do the capital stabilization move, it can also be taken out, and that money would just remain in free cash. You've had a presentation and discussions on the GIS program, this is standalone warrant article for the town to review. Funding would come from free cash. The Cranberry Bog, in Cranberry Bog House maintenance, that's the 26.5. You will note, in my note to you, that the MFC did discuss this and voted to recommend to you that $10,000 for the bog house be moved to their warrant article, and the 16.5 stay for the conscom. They believe that it is under their charter to do that maintenance, and they said explicitly that they would work with Warren and the conscom to make sure that it was done to standard, but they wanted to oversee it as part of facilities.
So, this would change, then?
Yes, this would change.
The number here.
Yeah.
A real quick question. The recommendations there are just a placeholder, right? We haven't-
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. So, that was just to build this warrant.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Police station renovation, so this is your warrant article to renovate the police station.
And who would make that presentation? The committee, or the chief, or?
Likely be a team effort.
Okay.
I would wanna see everyone up there to discuss it, and have pieces of that to show unanimity. And then CPA annual articles, so motion one, this is numbers that need to be, need to be changed in order to capture the current funding, but it will be important to note that there is $30,000 in the admin, and that will include a analysis of the bog house, so there's $20,000 in there for that, and that will be called out.
Did I, did I miss in the last meeting, kind of an overview of what was going on with CPA, or have we not had that yet?
Most of the articles were discussed.
Last week?
Yep.
Okay.
Or previously, yeah.
Previously. And then, so this one is, motion two is for the water analysis of the Cranberry Bog. This was the compromise with the petitioners to look at water flow and other impacts of that dam and make sure that the recommendations are tied to a hydrological study, and that's appropriate for the Cranberry Bog. Motion three is $50,000 for rental assistance from COHS, you got a individual presentation about this. 56.675 for fixing the FOB and other ADA compliant entrances at Benfield. So, this number is still not, still not there, and the whole proposal's still not there. If we can't get it done, then obviously it would be pulled, but we're trying to get this together to get a good analysis to the CPC. We do think we will get something to them by April 2nd, so they can decide whether or not to include this. And then $30,000 for another water study of the Greeno Dam area. And then the only remaining articles are the two citizens petitions, so these are still on here, they have to be on, on here by law. The petitioners are working to try and de-signature these, but they have to get the exact signatures that went on it to get it off. So, this is a-
Okay.
Town council, this is not any employee that made this.
They can withdraw it at the meeting, right?
You can just pass over at the meeting, but it might stay on the warrant.
Okay.
Can't remove it without.
Yeah.
And those are the articles, so we've trimmed it down quite a bit.
All right.
Couple follow-up questions?
Wait a second, sorry, never mind. Wait a second, sorry, never mind.
Oh.
Go ahead.
So just three things, I guess. The Article eight, the revolving fund, you said you're gonna make a chart. Are we gonna look at, back to our earlier discussion, like, how much is unspent? What do they project to spend and how much we would authorize? Are we gonna get that?
You can look at it, but it's not part of this warrant article. So you only set the...
What are we going to be voting on in the warrant article, then?
The limits, so how much they can spend in a year.
Which is based on what? What they anticipate needing?
Yes, so once you authorize the revolving fund, then all you can do is set the limit.
But isn't that compounding the problem we have? Shouldn't, can't you authorize a lower level if you feel they've got unspent funds in there?
You can, but that wouldn't change the total.
That doesn't.
It would just change how much they could spend.
But isn't that the point? Oh.
No.
No, you want them to spend, okay.
Well, we want them to spend it on the things that are supposed to be spent on.
No, they do, but if they have a balance, it doesn't acknowledge that.
That's right.
They spend what they spend.
Right.
Okay. And then the second thing is, question is, in the wage and class chart, I didn't see the seniors, you guys, in there. Aren't you on that chart as well? TA, police chief and so forth?
Anyone with a contract is not...
He's not on there, okay.
So that's me, the fire chief, the police chief.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, this bog house, Article 17. So everybody has to, I mean, MFC is saying it really should be part of our budget. We're gonna take on fixing the bog house. Conscom says what?
I have a meeting with them Thursday, good.
I was just gonna say, so the, of that 26.5 that's in here, that's gonna drop by 10, which will then go to MFC, which is gonna cover...
Yeah, I understand that.
But and the rest of the money is for Cranberry Bog maintenance.
No, I understand all that.
It's nothing to do with the house.
No, no, I'm talking about the house, the 10K.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying, Conscom has not agreed to that. It's a question of who has control of the funding, right?
You do.
Right, okay, so it should go to one of our department. Is Conscom elected or appointed?
No, they're...
Pointed.
They're us two.
So is the MFC.
So, right, and so, again, just to make sure we're clear, and in light of John Lavery's comments a little bit. We went through this, and we said the most important thing right now is to make sure it's safe, right? So that's our mission, is to make it safe. Other missions we may have, but that's our mission with this one.
And I wanna, and not necessarily safe for the tenants, we want it...
Just safe period.
Safe period.
Right, and then I guess the question is now for us, do we support the MFC in giving them the control of that 10? We should decide that, right?
Giving them responsibility for that maintenance.
That 10K, right.
That 10K, yeah.
Well, what did the MFC have to say? Let's start with the MFC member here.
Well, the MFC was, I think, supportive of taking it on as a responsibility, but needed authority to do so.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure, is the 10K, was that settled as a board here?
I think it was, in a meeting, a couple meetings ago, or maybe it was last meeting.
Okay, 'cause I thought we talked about it, but I don't know, we'd have kinda formally agreed or...
Yeah, and it, there was quite a bit of back and forth about the minutes for that meeting around that piece, and you'll see in the final version that Gretchen shared with us that, and I listened to the recording again, I don't know, and I think Gretchen did too. We said, we, we didn't take a motion, but we did have the discussion. Nathan made the suggestion, let's say, you know, $10,000 just to do the repairs based on safety, and that's what we agreed to without a formal vote.
So if we... Yeah. Have to be more careful about these formal votes, so, which I'm trying to be doing, so that we really all have that.
Memorialize what was agreed.
Yeah, right.
Formal vote comes when we vote in support or not supported the warrant articles.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions about the warrant? Great, let's move on to the ballot questions. We're running out of time, we've ran out of time, a long time ago. Oh, yeah, you probably want to, 'cause you're not running money.
Well, hang out, that's a, that's a separate thing.
Yeah, that's good. Oh, wait, excuse me, do you have anything to say about the unspent bond proceeds?
We'll have to vote on that, yep.
Well, will the FinCom be interested in that, is what I'm asking before?
They were, and they're supportive.
Well, do you want, I guess the question is, do you wanna close your meeting before or after that particular discussion we have on our agenda?
Do that next and then come back to the ballot questions.
All right, let's do that next then, and we'll come back to the ballot questions. Okay.
Okay.
Choice.
Just to, I can do this in under a minute, but longer if necessary. So the town borrowed money to do projects and then spent less than it borrowed, so that excess money by statute needs to be re-appropriated. Anything under 50,000 can be appropriated by the town's executive, which is you. Anything over 50,000 has to be re-appropriated at town meeting. So the list on the right is stuff that we're asking you tonight to re-appropriate to long-term debt. The number on the left will go under the capital article in the town meeting warrant for a total of around 195, 96,000, around $200,000 in proceeds that will, for all intents and purposes, turn into free cash. So your vote tonight is for all of the items that no longer have a purpose, but we borrowed for and we have into an account to go into the long-term debt payment. So you're gonna pay for long-term debt, but we already paid for most of the long-term debt, so that'll turn into a deficit account, and then we'll wash the free cash.
That's the right hand or the left hand?
The right hand, so I have it up here in the motion.
94.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Tell me about the mechanics of the left, the 101.
So only town meeting can re-appropriate that? So in the capital article, it'll say to re-appropriate 101 from this date plus free cash in order to fund the following list.
And what will it fund?
The capital, the capital.
Any capital.
The 510,000 dollar capital article.
So it was a school project, so we're saying it's gonna fund the wastewater treatment plant stuff.
Okay, so in other words, the 510, or isn't it 650?
Whatever it is.
Whatever it is, will actually be 100K less at the end of the day, and then that also... So it's only the approval cycle that's different. The mechanism of washing to free cash is the same, right? Okay.
Because you won't use as much, so you'll have it.
Okay.
With the exception of the top one there, knowing how much some of these things were, it's pretty impressive how close the estimate was.
Yeah. Yeah. Great, can I have a motion then, please?
I move to, the select board vote pursuant to General Legislature CE 44, Section 20, to authorize the payment of indebtedness specifically the long-term debt line in the town's operating budget with the transfer and application of unspent proceeds of borrowing for certain completed projects which are not in excess of 50,000 as identified in the packet.
Second. Okay. Would the FinCom like to weigh in with an opinion about that or advice?
We are supportive.
Okay, all right. Any discussion for the discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Now you can close your meeting. Thank you.
I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Little call, please.
Bernstein, yes.
Catu, yes?
Is Victor still there?
Victor, you there? I see ya.
Oh, he's busy.
You can close it without him.
It might have been him trying to call him by phone, but I was worried about Zoom bombing.
He was, he was trying to call him by phone.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't let him in.
He can close.
All right.
We are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Lynn, how many are rolling off? You and Victor, no?
No, no, just me.
You're the only one, okay.
I'm gonna spill all of this...
How many years?
Nine.
You did the nine, yeah, you rock. Let's hear it for nine, nine-year FinCom members.
Wow, thank you, thank you, Lynn.
I know, it was done, it's been done.
Hopefully I caused a lot of trouble.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Just saw the email from the tech. I've been waiting for 20 minutes.
Sorry. It was an unidentified number, I thought it was spam. Sorry.
Be too careful, all right.
All right.
Three ballot questions that I can explain rather quickly. So assuming you want to exclude the fire department debt, which I am recommending you do, then it does require a ballot.
Yeah.
If the town says no, then I think you have your...
So it gives the, I mean, besides the fact that it's excluded, then it also gives the town taxpayers a second look at that expenditure, not just the group that shows up to town meeting. Which is probably a good thing, since...
I think it's good, because it's been discussed and it fits into a plan, and if they don't want it, they don't want it.
Will there be an amount in the ballot question?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the second one, this is still being finalized, but the second one is the police station.
Yep, same thing.
And then the third one is the town clerk moving to an appointed position.
Yeah, and we should probably be starting to do some outreach and education again about this particular one, so that people aren't getting the ballot box not knowing a darn thing about it.
Well, we really, if we're supporting all three, we should do outreach on all three.
Yeah.
Because it's a different constituency than show up at town meeting.
Yep. Okay.
That's just it, just wanted you to see them, so that you know they're coming.
TA report.
Well, good, I'm up again.
Yep. A little late, sorry.
Okay, we already talked about the cubicle project that'll begin in May. I am digitizing the executive records, so these records go back to 2013. It's 35 boxes of records being digitized so that we can actually know what's in there rather than having it sit in the vault. That starts tomorrow. This is ARPA-funded, I do not think I will use all the records management money despite wanting to, so some of that's gonna be returned to ARPA, so it'll be a future discussion. We regret to inform everyone that Juniper Friedman resigned from her position, simply was not a fit. She was a lovely person, and it was great to get to know her, but we are, we are looking at other options for that position. We also had and sent an offer to a heavy equipment operator who worked in a different community. We almost had a signed offer, but it was the health insurance splits that caused the employee not to come. We did offer another step or two to try and overcome it, and it just wasn't enough. So I'm only saying that to back up the discussion that you had earlier, that it is indeed a thing. We talked about the budget length, so I can skip this section. Also, town meeting, we finalized the postcard, we made it bright green.
Oh, I was gonna say, because this looks like a death, a funeral announcement for the flag.
So it is, it is bright green, it'll show up in people's boxes. We are very serious that we will hand-deliver warrants. We are going to put information everywhere to include an advertisement in the mosquito. We will bring a warrant to your house if you want one. And I am going to deliver a signed one to John Valentine, because he likes to write in the margins, and he told me that last year. The, also, we'll put it at the police station, the Gleason Public Library, in the town hall lobby. So it'll be everywhere, we're just not sending out the 1800. We're targeting people who specifically want a printed warrant. I am looking for your approval for the Tour de Cure. The American Diabetes Association New England chapter is requesting permission to conduct their cycling event. Both chiefs are in approval and will support this event. Around 500 people will be coming through the town on bikes Sunday, August 18th, 2024.
Do you want this motion right now?
Do it now.
Yes, please.
I move to approve the request of the New England chapter of the American Diabetes Association for use of town roads during the annual Tour de Cure on August 18th, 2024, between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM.
Second. I have to say, this is the most organized, the thing, the information they give you beforehand. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The DPW trailer sprinkler system, done.
Right.
We did it. Total diligence by the MFC, Jim Hall is a rock star, and the contractor and designer we had for this were top-notch. So it was expensive, but it's done, and we can now use that for its intended purpose. The dog park is back out to bid, the smaller but quaint and nice dog park is out to bid. The quarry auditorium lighting, our hero over here. So we started contracting with Barbason this week and contracted with GD to start building the electrical construction design. So based on this final EC design, we'll either hire an in-house electrician or rebid the final design, which will be under what we, what we have gotten for bids so far, we are sure. There is a chance that this project will require additional funding, so we are asking that the select board consider using ARPA to fund this gap. 20 to 40,000.
How much?
Depends on the bids. 20 to 40,000.
20 to 40.
How much ARPA do we have left?
20 to 40.
I don't have that at the top of my fingers, well, but...
So...
We're having a meeting next Monday, and so I can get that information. Yes, we saw it.
Add a quick note, we've been working a lot with the schools, to their credit, on using that school lunch fund that we've decided to really dig into. They are gonna move some of their capital projects that were ARPA-funded to this account, which should free up some more ARPA. So there's more ARPA coming between my records management and the schools. The schools are going to ask that you support the quarry project with that, with that move, but it's not required. Julie and I revamped, really Julie, Julie revamped the Greeno Barn procurement package, and that should go out to bid this week as well. So we, again, we think it was an admin error, and we think that project is still gonna be fine. We got good bids for recreational mowing and fertilizing contracts. Michael Hightower won this bid, he's been doing it for a couple years, he's an excellent contractor. He won both bids, and we did a three-year, so we've locked in three years of competitive pricing.
Good.
Hey, Ryan, on the Greeno, so would that come up, will that be in time for voting in a town meeting? This, do we have to vote the Greeno? Because we already voted it, we just have to make sure it comes in under the...
200.
What we voted.
200, which, okay.
Two bids came in at 200, they just didn't put in the zeros. So we feel confident. And we've paired them up, maybe making them a team. All right, I'm notifying you of several signs. The Concord Community Chess sign will be out there, advertising their Millennium Fund campaign, and the Youth Commission will be advertising their events in the Rotary, and the Gleason Public Library is advertising their short story contest, which I plan on winning. Upcoming discussion points. I am not on military leave, and it has been pushed to June due to my old man illness.
Ryan, before you move on, do we have to move, I see this other motion about the National Brain Tumor Society ride?
Yes, if you wanna...
You want a motion on that?
Take that on.
Is this the time?
Sure.
I would move that we approve the request of the National Brain Tumor Society ride for use of town roads for their annual bike ride on May 19th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
All right, budget discussions. April 9th will be your last chance to make your, any recommendations you want on the warrant. Of course, you can put on the warrant that you'll make recommendations at town meeting, and we just have to print it, so April 9th is the last day to sign it. April 23rd, that would be your last chance to make those recommendations or your last meeting before the town meeting. There'll also be a budget hearing, do we have a date for that, Lynn?
Yeah, April 17, but depending, but I think we can keep it to April 17. I haven't formally posted it yet, but that's where we're at, so I will, I will confirm on Tuesday. Is that, is that okay?
Yep, so we'll build a...
We've got it, we've got a placeholder for April 17.
That'll be the dry run of the budget presentation for town meeting. All right, ESE is coming to town next April 2nd, which is your next meeting. They will be talking about their work plan and their climate leader presentation. You have a full hour to talk with them as, and that'll lead into your goals discussion. So I plan on giving you a quick report on my goals, where I've hit and where I've come short, and we are suggesting, and I'll send this out again, that you review the select board goals and have comments ready for the goals discussion on April 2nd to make that a productive session. So where you think you have succeeded as a board and where you've fallen short, I think each person laying that out would be a very productive session.
I'm sorry, April 2nd, that's Tuesday?
That's a week from tonight, right?
We added that.
We added it.
Can't be there.
Can't be there.
Well, now I'm not going.
Well, poo, on you. Okay. Well, but Nathan, regardless, if you could write us, you know, give us some written input about how you feel we did with the goals, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, I think it would be, if the rest of us are willing, I know it would need to be done by the end of this week, but I think it would be helpful if we each took the Select Board goals, as well as the TA goals, but did our own short review and notes on it, and provided that to the town administrator so it could go out in the packet at the end of this week, so that it gets us...
It's gotta be done by Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't make that deadline.
I won't either.
I can tell you that right now. Those of us with day jobs, I don't think we'll make it.
Okay. Well, we typically send the packet out on Fridays. I don't know if that's doable, or even by Monday. I just, you know, I've talked about this before, I think... The more we think through things in advance of the meeting, and the more that we are able to...
I don't disagree.
I mean, because we did talk about this two weeks...
What is it you're looking for?
Well, I...
Tell me specifically what you want.
Well, it, I'll just take myself for an example, so I'm going through the sustainability goal. I think we looked to the ESC to provide us with their update, right? Because it's really...
Oh, I know, yeah.
But the others, I look at the, what was it, financial, what was it?
Is this a grading? Oh, you don't need to go like, I didn't mean that way, I meant maybe more, one level up from that granularity. You want us to grade what we did, or you want us to talk about what we want to do?
I think we look at what we said we were gonna do, what our goals were, and, okay.
Yeah.
How'd we do on it, right? Your analysis of what we actually got done, and then as a second part of that, what should we now be doing going forward?
And so then, that would be curated by Gretchen or Ryan into a table, or what's the word?
Or no, or maybe even just our comments are sent out to everybody, as they are in the packet. So we can each see what the other people said.
So we don't spend time doing it at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So we can focus on the things where we're all in agreement, or the things where we're...
And if we, all right, and if we don't meet the deadline, we cannot circulate it...
No, we can't.
We can't circulate it in advance, we have to only bring, our only choice is...
You can send it to Ryan.
Right.
We can't circulate it to each other, and then...
No, but you could, I mean, we could do the pre-read, let me just ask. Gretchen sends us stuff all the time, that's like late-breaking news, and we read it, right?
Right.
So why can't we just get it to Gretchen by the end of the weekend, and she can push out, and we can read it?
On Monday? I would be able to do it, and I will try to call in on Tuesday.
Yeah, so, and then, I mean, the only drawback is, it's not in the packet, but eventually it will be in the packet, right?
Yes, right.
And we're not soliciting public input specifically on our goals, right?
Right.
So I don't, I don't see why we need to make the packet deadline.
Does that work for folks, if we said by the end of the weekend, and then Gretchen could send something out to people on Monday?
You have it or you don't, I mean...
Well, right, I want to try, but I, to that end, I have some really busy things coming up, and I was wondering, can you send tomorrow the information exactly you want me to...
Are you looking at me?
Yeah, well, you brought this up, Barney, and we could have the TA, or, but, but just, you know, the exact documents you want me to look at, because rather than hunting through...
I know, I'm with you, I'm with you.
It's so easy to say, this is what you want me to do, and I'll do it.
Right, right.
So we, that meeting, we'll meet tomorrow, and I'll send it out tomorrow.
I can't meet tomorrow.
Okay, can I?
I, we'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
You'll be too tomorrow.
It's very easy.
I know, I have it on my desk, so it's not a problem.
Come on, folks, we can do this.
I know you can do it.
Right.
I didn't know about it, I didn't know about the Tuesday, yeah, so...
I don't know how that happened, but...
I was in at the last...
As a related thing, what we, and if Christina, if Christina's still there, talking about the ESC goals, because the, our goals are, you know, we have ESC goals that we asked the ESC to take responsibility for, so that's, we're going to want to be reviewing those and getting their report on how they...
Barney already said it. We got...
On those, right?
Yep.
Yeah, asking for ESC to provide us with a review that hopefully we get in advance.
I would just say, in the future, if there's like a special meeting or a special need, when that meeting is decided, any input like this needed should be set at the same time, because we've lost a week, right?
Well, I think we did actually when we set this meeting, because it was...
We did, and I think Christina knows about it already, so...
Hi, may I, may I confirm? Yes, I've already sent in a sort of state of the ESC report, which includes where we stand in relation to your goals and what our goals are as well. So that's already submitted.
Okay, great, thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
To your point, we could do a better job.
And one other...
You and everyone knows.
One other thing I think would be helpful. Ryan, if you're comfortable with this, in terms of your goals, I know yours did not include this specifically, but I think it'd be really worthwhile to hear from you about the implementation of the staff evaluations that we discussed last year and implementing for this year, and not specifics about specific people, but just where are you in that process? How many department heads have had those evaluations? How many have done them with their staff? Are we on track for being able to use those? How people have done meeting their goals by the end of this fiscal year as a way to decide whether or not people are getting those merit raises? I think that would be a worthwhile thing to hear from you about, too.
Excellent. Two more, I will do that.
Thank you.
Two more updates and things for you to think about. So the fire station conceptual design is going to come back to you pretty quickly. Not your meeting on the 2nd or the 9th, but the 23rd, but still thinking about ways to make sure that you're communicating to potential designers what you want their design to look like prior to them submitting bids will make it more successful. So this could include total cost, it could include any considerations that you want in terms of modular stick, you know, whatever. All of those things put into the RFQ makes it very clear and signals to people that that's what you want, and then the designer selection committee can pick that person. So that's what that discussion's about. Nothing really new, except your final thoughts on the goals. And then road maintenance plan, so Jim, Julie and I met with Nitch to discuss the road surface plan. You will get a two-year plan, it is based off your feedback from that, is based off the equity roads, as we talked about, and then the $500,000 investment. Then you will get after a more expanded plan sometime this summer, so five to 10 years, rather than just the two. But we want to put the two out to bid, and then talk about the longer-term plan, and then roll that into the capital plan as a more real number than the 300 we're carrying right now. Because I hear you, that 500 is the target. And then, there's a lot, that's a lot coming to you.
Yeah.
So for staff recognition, I do want to recognize, I know she works for me directly, but Gretchen, so she does a lot, you know she does a lot, but I just want to talk about what she's done lately. So Aubrey and I were both scheduled to be out of the office, so Gretchen took a lot of additional responsibilities and training. Turns out that I was here, which is probably more of a hindrance to her, but she took on a lot, serving as the office point person. She also balanced additional duties recently with the CPC, the MFC, and the TMSC, and she's handling literally hundreds of transfer station sticker purchases. Hundreds of people come in to buy these, which we want, but she's taken those all on individually, also with senior worker. She never complains when my schedule adjusted, she just keeps adding to her workload, she communicates, she cares, she calls me old sometimes, that's fine, and much of the town has literally been running on Gretchen's shoulders lately. So if she wants to be town administrator someday, I think she definitely could be, she probably could be now, so we'll just keep her as long as we've got her, and appreciate her for what she does.
Very good.
Some dates of interest coming up. March 29th is the election caucus.
That's Friday.
That's Friday.
The special meeting on April 2nd. Aubrey will be in the office next week, which is a point of interest. Have your two regular meetings. I am out of state, April 12th to the 19th, but I will be able to communicate and probably watching the public budget hearing from a Winnebago. And then the annual town meeting is May 13th. May 29th is the town election, and then that rescheduled military leave is June 8th to 22nd. So good timing for the town, bad timing to be in El Paso, so it takes a little bit of stress off. And the draft agenda, we just discussed. So climate leader and ESC, and then Select Board and TA goals. Your entire agenda on the 9th will be about recommending, approving or not the warrant to make sure that that is final and signed that night, so that should be the...
Yes.
Basically the only item.
Right?
Right. We have one set of minutes that needs to be finished up.
That was the one that was sent separately, right?
Yes. I thought it was an improvement, personally. It was the...
Minutes from the 27th of...
February 27th.
Yep, right.
Barney, you want to make that motion, since you're the one that...
I move that we approve the minutes for the Select Board meeting on February 27th, 2024, as written in the email we received from Gretchen Galmore today, yesterday. Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So I have one minor thing, so in this community input section, Reid warned each commentator when their time was up, et cetera, et cetera. Commentators continue to speak, they were warned again, when they continued to, when they continued to interrupt, the board placed them in the virtual waiting room. But is it not the case that we put everybody in the virtual? We did not, we only put them in.
The disruptive people.
The disruptive people.
Okay, that's right, okay. All right, and I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, that's it.
Okay.
All right, any liaison reports?
I do, brief.
Okay.
So we met again, the town meeting task force.
Oh, yeah.
So it could, yeah, it's going great. So we got a lot of good ideas, we're, I think I mentioned last time, we're sort of bucketing things. Right now, we're kind of focused on this town meeting and things we can do in this town meeting, and then in the summer, we'll take on the longer-term things. So on the short-term stuff, a couple of things to note. One is, and I'll say it to everybody publicly, but certainly to you guys, outreach to your whole circle, show up to, I mean, we need to drum up more interest. One of the things that's related to that, we mentioned, which is having, I don't know if it's a hearing or maybe it's a focal group, to explain the issues that we're covering. One of the ideas, and again, I need to be refreshed on what the rules are, but sandwich boards or other signs, somebody's making, we're going to make signs that's not just the QR code, which you certainly can take a picture of the QR code and you get the warrant article, but the warrant article presents pretty drily, like just, like bullet points, these are the things town meeting's going to cover, like the police station, right? We're going to discuss the police station, like, to try to get people to understand what it is we're...
Sort of a briefing document.
Well, not even so much as a document, like a poster, just as bullet points, like around town.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So we got to work on getting, I mean, we have them, and I guess we go through the same approval process, right? Can we post them, like at the transfer station?
You don't need approval for that.
Okay, only at the Rotary you need approval.
Of course, at the Rotary, you can't put too much information on it, because people have...
No, no, it's not, it's not a complicated thing. Well, the Rotary's probably a bad example. Transfer stations, schools, firms, library, places, you know, we'll figure out where to place them. A couple of people have volunteered actually to do these little snippets of, they're like a TikTok video, really. One is, I think Mark agreed, he's gonna, he's not here now, but he was going to do, or Lynn's going to do, like explaining the budget process, like a one-minute clip.
Cool.
And just post it on social media, and there's a few other of those that, Deepa's going to do one on, I forget something, but just things, she's relating her experience in generating interest in the playground, right? Things they worked on, and all the people that are younger than us, which is most of the people, have much more access to those interesting technologies. So I think it's going to be pretty, pretty good to start some of that.
Good, good.
My idea, which I have to check in with Betsy on, but I would like to, just as like, and I may have mentioned this last time, just like the mosquito thanks its donors in a full-page ad, just thank all the people, like, have the list of attendees of town meeting after, and just thank them, you know, just have a list, sort of public shaming in a little way, but, you know.
Reverse...
Yeah, reverse shame.
The left-handed copula.
Yeah, right, right.
My left-handed shape, shaming or whatever.
But one of the things, and this is a chart that I think Deepa or somebody's going to put out, given that we only get 5% attendance, if you don't go, you are ceding your vote to... 20, 19 people are ceding their vote to the one who decides to go.
Yes.
And by not going, you are ceding your vote. We are a, and this is a message maybe you can promulgate through your own channels, we are effectively a one-day legislature. That's what town meeting is. We are the legislature of the town for that day. And if you don't go, you're not part of the legislature. You're ceding that control to somebody else, not of your choosing. It's not like the...
Right, it's not like representative.
The representative one where you choose who's going.
Right.
Whoever shows up, they get 20 votes, they bring 20 votes with them, to vote the way they want to vote, so.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Right.
And that actually is one that should be...
Well, that's something we are gonna, well, yeah.
Like a little...
Yeah.
Press release.
I think, Cynthia, were you in the, were you in our meeting, Cynthia? Are you there?
No, I wasn't. Sorry.
I thought there was somebody from the paper, okay. Anyway, that's what I got, thanks.